Good evening, everyone. If you'd join us for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Once again, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the town of Rutland Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, June 11th, 2019. Four out of five members and plenty in the audience. We're going to get right to it. All board members seen the orders?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright. Approval of Select Board minutes of May 28th and June 6th.
Move to approve.
Both sets?
Is that for both sets, John?
Yes.
And I don't have minutes in my packet. Thank you.
Oh, the June 6th was a site visit.
June 6th was a site visit.
Yep. There's a place on the back to sign to.
Yeah, okay. Uh, was there a second? Mary?
Um, sure.
Okay. Hall is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, it stays.
Abstention by Selectman Donardo. That'll get us three signatures. Any questions from the floor? Public comment, anyone who's not on the agenda who wishes to speak. There are several of you who are here tonight that are on the agenda, so I'm going to move through some of those quickly, okay? And then however we're going to get to you, I believe it's going to be a quick executive session for what we need to talk about, so... Okay. So, no questions? Alright. We're going to go down to letter B. Board to discuss speeding on secondary roads. Meg Robertson's here. Did you want to come up to the table, Meg, and tell us what you personally discovered on Hitzel?
Oh, I don't think it's a recent discovery.
Well, what you recently called me about, I guess. Come on up to the table, just so we can get you on camera. Just for the record, tell us your name and where you live.
Um, Megan Robertson, 44 Hitzel Terrace. Um, what was it, two Saturdays ago, almost? Did I?
Is that when my phone rang?
I think so. Um, my son and I were walking as we normally do, and we stop always when we hear cars coming. And we were stopped and a woman flying almost hit my son. Not even paying attention, looking at the neighbor's house, and going around the corner, the picture that I sent to you for that bush. But it's, it's an ongoing thing, even though with the speed limit changing, hasn't changed whatsoever. They fly not just there, it's on Susan Lane, it's on Victoria, with Mighty Mites, talking with other parents. It's happening. And like tonight, they're all at ABC night, you know, at school.
Oh, wow, okay. Right.
But I didn't even want to talk about it.
So, earlier this year, the board voted to reduce speeds on subdivisions and side streets. Did we replace the speed sign on Hitzel?
Yes, it is.
I've got to wait until July before I order signs.
It says 25.
Okay, so Hitzel did get...
It's there now.
Yeah.
It did. It's posted.
Because that was one of the first ones that came to our attention.
Right, I mean, that's where that petition came from, from the children.
From the children, and that's, that's a...
What motivated us to do this, so...
Mm-hmm.
So, I had a few things I wanted to talk about and then hear the board's thoughts, but I had, our police chief couldn't make it tonight. He had a training to be at, but he has asked me to get you his cellphone number, and he would like to talk to you about it. And he also is going to talk to the officers about doing some radar up there. The, the good news is, come July 1st, less, you know, two weeks from now, we're going to have another full-time police officer starting with, and the police committee has talked to them that one of their, one of our priorities as a board is traffic enforcement, to have more of it and be more present throughout the town. We've also signed up with the sheriff's department through a federal grant to do some additional traffic enforcement. And then I also talked to, John Paul is also the town's second constable, and John has agreed to do some radar in that neighborhood as well. So, those are some of the steps that we've taken since you and I talked, and something that's been in the works for a while now with the additional officer and so on. And then we're also...
There's one other...
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, there's one other thing under the discussion, and that's the possibility of buying a speed cart, which will track speed and times when speeders go through so we can target enforcement better.
I mean, I, you know, talking with some of the other parents, like my neighbor, and that it's usually when people are coming, leaving work.
Yeah.
Especially, it's at dusk is usually when I see it.
Okay.
As well.
Are you kind of writing it down when it occurs?
I just know because my son goes down every night, so I know at dusk, like I hear them flying.
So, dusk being 9:30-ish, nine?
Well, now it's a little bit later, but like when it was like, he goes down between 7:00 and 7:30, so quarter of eight, it's, and after.
Okay.
Yeah.
But right after work, 5 o'clock is when she sees that, you know, they're flying. But that was Saturday afternoon at like 12 o'clock. We stop every time a car comes, you know, and complete disregard. But with what those kids have done, it's almost like it's been done for no reason. Nobody's been there enforcing it. People still fly. It hasn't changed. And that's a problem. People need to stop and smell the roses. They, life is too short. I mean, it's not, it's, you know, with my child's not wanting to talk to Officer Slough, my, "Did you tell Officer Slough what happened this weekend?" He's like, "I don't want to talk about it." And that's a problem.
Sure.
Well, we do have to wait until the budget year starts in a few weeks to bring on the new officer, and that will give us more ability to do those enforcements.
And they know that they're more than welcome to sit in my driveway because you're gonna, they're not going to be seen from either direction. You're gonna, it's revenue for the town. I mean, it's, there's...
When Josh shares that phone with you, you give him your street number, too.
Yeah.
Not now, but at that time.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
I appreciate it.
We'll do everything we can up there, alright?
Right.
This is a problem that we hear throughout different parts of the town, so...
It's all over.
Yeah, I mean...
East Pittsford Road, grocery, creek road.
There's problems.
There is, but I mean, like Susan Lane, like that whole development, one of the other parents that their kid plays Mighty Mites with my son, he said that they're flying at like 40 miles an hour. I mean, that, that's, you know, ours is a dead end. I mean, you know, I understand that you can only sit somewhere for so long, they're just going to start slowing down automatically. I get that, but being sporadic and random times and, you know, if it moved from Hitzel to a different division and do the same thing, it's, they're never going to know. I mean, after a while, yeah, they're going to kind of figure it out, but...
Right.
And then what's the next step if that doesn't enforce it? What are we?
I don't think we're there yet.
Okay.
Besides for being there and being active, I don't know what else, you know, we can do, so... But I think you're going to see a big difference with this new full-time police officer coming on. We're going to have much more freedom and autonomy to do things that, you know, the board wants and through the police chief, of course, but Chief Dumas is all about speeds and, you know, the board invested some serious money as well to equip Constable Fagin's vehicle as well as some of the latest lights and radar guns and things like that. So, we're, I think you're going to see a dramatic increase in radar run this summer, so...
Up to here?
Yeah. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
And I'm off, so thank you so much.
Alright, take care.
Good night.
Um, Regosta's are here, so we go to letter F. Board to discuss recent site visit on Grover Drive. Do you guys want to come to the, up to the table? Tell us your names and where you live in town. Byron, do you want to get closer for this, too? We have a microphone can pick you up.
Jim Regosta from Grover Drive.
Brianna Regosta.
Thanks for coming. So, several of us went out last, what was it, last?
Thursday.
Last Thursday, thank you.
Yes, that was Moenheim.
And last Thursday, took a peek at the situation that's going on near your house and... The board had about a month ago sent a letter that we wanted some things changed and fixed up there, so we agreed to come back for another site visit so other board members could see, and so we are here. So Byron, just for the record and the audience at home, can you just tell us sort of where we're at and how we got to this point and what the problems?
I guess the problem was that when Mr. Regosta called me and said he had an issue with water on Grover Drive and, yeah, he's got an issue with water. He was in the middle of last winter, and we've had several heavy rains, et cetera, and groundwater, of course, was high for everyone as a result even of heavy rainfalls from last summer into early fall. And I noticed that the area that the town had received an easement for, for stormwater storage, had been dug out and a small, for lack of a better word, pond had been established there, and he was pumping into that. And apparently, there's enough volume there, so it fills that up and then the water runs over the road. I have, personally, have not seen water run over the road. I'm just taking Mr. Regosta's word for it. I can believe it probably has from time to time, and he has diligently set up a pump and pumped water across the road since probably last January, as far as I know. So, that's kind of where we're at. We, you know, there wasn't a lot we were going to do in the middle of the winter. I told him we would come back in the spring, take a look at it, and, which I did. I met with Red Grover up there. I went up with a couple of my guys with a transit and shot some grades to see if there was some direction that that water could economically be channeled to, and the potential was there to run that water to the north, but you're going to probably need an easement from the landowner on the other side of the road, which I still think is red, but I don't know if he sold the property or not. And then that water's going to have to turn and go across another lot and drain down toward, probably the Griffin property before it ever gets down to the East Creek. The grades there are pretty flat. There's a chunk of rock there, which I'm not sure if it's just a rock or if it's actual ledge that would have to be dealt with in order to pick up additional pitch. Without an adequate amount of pitch, water during the wintertime runs so slowly that it just freezes into place and freezes in layers until it fills and plugs a ditch or a culvert or whatever. So, it just didn't seem feasible to put a culvert under Grover Drive and get that water to run toward the north and across somebody else's property. So, at that point, I think it just, we told Jim that, you know, probably wasn't a whole lot we could do other than to run it to the, to the west, and that would involve running it into another landowner's pond. So, at that point, I didn't feel that the town really had any involvement at this point. Jim's house, Jim dug a hole in a wet area, even though he claims it wasn't, but anyways, so that's kind of where we're at. At that point, we, you know, the next layer above me is the Select Board, and that's where we, we're at.
Thanks. So, we, we did visit, and I, you know, it's pretty apparent that it's wet and there is a problem up there, and, you know, that area had been disturbed to house more water in that sort of makeshift pond, as you said. Jim, what is, what are you ultimately looking for from the town? What is, what is your perfect outcome?
Some sort of help to divert that water out of there, because it's currently, it's, it is flooding the road. Um, I've been, I have a pump in there, and when it gets to that level, it initially floods our property first, and then maybe 10 feet from where that pond area is, it starts going, lapping the road. And then at that point, I always throw a pump in, turn it on, or the pump's already in and I turn it on, and pump it across the road.
So, did you have water in your basement? Is that what started this?
One time, yeah. It backed up enough, and, and that wasn't home at the time, so it went over the road, backed up under the property enough, and ended up in the basement.
And was that before or after you dug it out?
That wa, well, it was twice. It was before and after, both times. You know, I think the board, when, when you saw it, we could all agree that the water just doesn't drain there. Prior to it being dug with the natural soil that was there, it was filled in. It was higher, so that what that did is pushed the water table even higher, and it went over the road even more. So, I got permission from Red Grover, who's the landowner, to take it down lower, and our hope was that by digging that down, it would hold enough water where it wouldn't go over the road, wouldn't come onto my property, and then it would just drain away. That didn't work either, and just due to the ledge that's underneath there. So, you know, it really ultimately, it doesn't matter what kind of soil you put in there, it just doesn't drain. So, that's, we're kind of stuck. And I think what happened was, when that was designated by the state as a wastewater, that was however many years ago, prior to all these houses being built, and especially my house being built. So, you know, you clear the lots and you clear the land, you know, the water just runs off. So, I think when it was designated, it was fine. You know, all these years later, with houses being built up there, it's causing a problem. And I can see it compounding even more with the lot that's right next to me. Eventually, at some point, that's going to sell, and if those owners decide to clear that lot of all the trees and make it a yard, we're going to have even more water flowing down that hill into that water runoff.
But it may be that it's not a buildable lot. It may be that your lot shouldn't have been built on where it is, but I'm having trouble seeing how this is a town issue. Am I correct that your neighbor will let you trench into his pond?
Yeah.
Doesn't that solve your problem?
Well, it does, but I don't feel as though it's 100% our problem. If it's, you know, the, the water runoff lot can't handle the volume of water that's going into it, even without, you know, any type of pumping or anything, just from a regular rainstorm, it can't handle it.
Okay, but from our perspective, that we, there was no problem until you built your house.
Well, we were told that initially, the town knew that they were going to have to put a culvert in at some point down the road before we even built up there.
I don't know who made what representations to you about what the town was going to do, but they didn't have any authority to, and I don't, I wouldn't have relied upon it if I were you.
So, why would the town request an easement, or why wasn't an easement given to the town for that area if there was no problem there?
Because you always try and get an offset when you're building a road, whether you need it or not.
I think, I feel as though, in talking with Byron, he had, when we initially spoke, he had mentioned to the town that it could potentially be a problem with all the water and the runoff there.
When you built your house?
Hence why an easement was done.
You mean, when you built your house?
Whenever the town took the road over, yeah. It was prior to.
We've taken the road over, what, three years ago?
Yeah, and there were several easement areas.
When was that, when was the easement issued? It was at that same time, wasn't it, Byron? The easement for that stormwater collection area was about the same when we took the road over, right? Wasn't it?
There was a precondition, condition over.
Prior to this disturbing of that area and the additional water being pumped in there, do you recall water being over Grover Drive there? Okay.
Additional water that's being pumped out of the ground.
I mean, I can...
And see, this is...
I think there's a misunderstanding there. It's not, is there additional water being pumped out of the ground from the perimeter drain? Yes, there is. To that extent, I can show you pictures on my phone of the amount of water that goes into there. It's, the pumping from the perimeter drain is minuscule compared to the amount of water runoff from all of the properties around there that are going into that. It's, every time it rains hard, and which we know it all has been, it's, it's just overloading it.
Well, the only water coming out of your footing drain is what you're pumping out of that.
Correct.
Little catch basin, correct?
Correct.
And according to the numbers that you gave me and the calculations I made, that amounts to about 38,000 gallons of water a day.
Well, then I'm way off.
Okay.
Those are the numbers that you gave me. I guess, and I don't know if you want to see if you can pass it around, keep penning it. That's after a rainstorm that came.
But just recently, though?
Yeah.
And that's after that area's been disturbed? That, that's not prior to...
And I didn't take pictures prior to it being, but, I mean, common sense tells you that if you fill that whole area in, all that's going to do is raise that water level that much higher and go over the, over the road. I mean, it's, you know, we could fill it all back in on whatever soil you want, and then I'll be calling you right back here with pictures saying, "It's flooding the road now, what do we do?" I don't feel as though it's up to me to constantly keep putting a pump in there, going out there and pumping it out so it doesn't go over the road.
Yeah, because part of our, part of the letter was, we wanted to, the, the ground soil that was disturbed, put back to its natural state. So, you could fill it with crushed stone if you wanted to, and it's not going to drain, it's still going to fill up.
But it's, it's not the draining, Jim. The type of soil that's in there has some, and I don't know, I'm not, this isn't my line of work, but there are certain properties to that soil that can't just be reproduced by just dumping dirt back in there. It's going to require somebody to come and design how that's got to be made back to what its original state. I mean, that was kind of like an official stormwater catch area for the town, and by the disturbance and the additional water, now we've got a bigger problem. So, there's like, your problem with your groundwater is an issue that you need to deal with yourself, and if we have an issue with that area becoming super saturated to the point where we can't deal with it, then the town will have to figure out a way to do that. But I think there's two separate issues here. You need to figure out a way at the most financially feasible economic way to get rid of your basement groundwater and get rid of that. Right now, that sounds like maybe a directional bore and send it down to Mr. Bullock's pond. That, that, after that's taken care of and that area gets restored back to its original nature and its original ecological materials, if the town has a problem, then we're going to have to deal with it, then that becomes our problem. There's, there's like two separate problems that have been combined to one here. Why I say, and Byron doesn't believe that we had water over the road prior to the disturbance and the additional water. You know, as the lots get developed, there could be a problem that we have to address in the future, but by disturbing that, you have kind of changed the nature of that soil and that, that area there, and, and those are things that, when it was originally set up, was to be able to handle that water, and now that's gone, so I, I see two separate problems here.
It was set up to handle that water prior to all the lots being cleared in the house.
Well, but, but this has only been within three years that this easement was done, so...
Hey, keep in mind that the original soil that was there, it didn't drain either.
No, it's, it won't.
It didn't go over the road because I pumped it out, so it didn't go over the road.
Well, then, then that mitigated a problem that never became a problem for us because you were pumping it out. If, if that had been left to its natural state and everything was in the original thing, and we found out that, okay, this is not going to work as a stormwater containment, then we would have to do something, then we would have had to taken steps to do that. But now, we have no way of knowing that, because it's, it's, everything's been changed.
It's staying on me for taking the initiative and pumping it out so it wouldn't flood the road. I should have just let, and...
Let it flood the road, let us know there was...
Exactly.
We would have figured out a problem, and then the town would have had to...
But you'd never be able to tell whether it was your perimeter drain that was, that was the extra water, sent it over the road or not.
I mean...
I can, because there's times where throughout the year where the perimeter drain doesn't pump at all, and that still floods and floods the road. It's, I mean, I wish I had the video and the pictures prior to, but I can honestly tell you, there's times when the perimeter drain doesn't pump, and it still floods it, and it floods the road. I don't feel as though having to bear the expense of an engineer and filling that back in for it to just flood and, you know, have a problem with you, you know, with the town again, because it doesn't drain, it's all ledge.
Well, that's easy for you to say after you dug it up.
I saw it prior to digging it up. This is my whole point. Prior to digging it up, I saw it that it would not drain, and it was flooding the road.
Byron, so a couple fixes here would be a culvert across the street, but it'd have to go pretty far out because of the grade of the...
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta digaways in order to get pitch enough to keep water moving, and then you're going to have to do something to probably overdig the ditch and fill it with stone so that you can provide some frost protection till water can keep moving.
Why would you do that when you can move it down the same side of the road?
I'm just asking, I'm just hearing all logical options, not, I'm not suggesting one or the other.
Fair amount of transit work needs to be done there and some investigation as to whether that's just a big rock that's in the way or whether there's actual ledge.
And then we have to talk easements to allow the water to go there.
Right.
Talk to Red about getting an easement.
There's one thing we could do, I think, and that is have Jim do the directional bore and get the perimeter drain water down to the pond, and then get that excess water from your property going in the other direction.
Byron, is there enough?
That will give us a little more information.
Um, if you stayed on that north side of the road, okay, is there enough? Do you think there's, I, I can't, from the time there, it's relatively flat to the hill, right? So, if we were to run...
I don't know if you can make it run...
Can you make it run west or not?
Down the edge of the road and keep it along the edge of the road.
You'd have to go...
Go a lot more transit work to figure that out.
Right. So, like you would be down, say, two feet at that wet area, at that depression area, two to three feet. By the time you get to the crest of the hill, you might have to be down five or six to get it to flow, four or five.
Going to the west?
Yeah.
Oh, God, yes.
Yeah. See, it's, that's, that's the thing, is whether or not it'd be feasible to, because it would make more sense if we could, if we were going to do anything and get involved in this, would we be keep it on that south side of the road, not cross the road, and try to run it down toward the pond? Because now you're not getting into any other people's properties.
You want to make sure you put in at least a 15-inch culvert.
Right.
You'd do a 15-inch culvert from where it is down to the pond?
Yeah. You know, that, that mitigates both problems. It's just, so, but I don't know if we had a problem prior to the disturbance and prior to what was going on. Jim says we do, and because we're not there and don't see it every time it rains, maybe it did flood. But nobody ever called you about it because there's no, there's not that much traffic and not that many houses, but that might be ultimately the thing, is to do a little research and see what, going down that west, or the south side of the road headed west, and how deep you'd have to go and, and make this work. And like you said, you'd probably have to put in a 15-inch culvert. The other thing we'd have to be care, you know, there's utilities along through there, and there's stuff like that, so all of that stuff's got to be worked around. And that might be worth looking into. And then down the road, that will, should ensure that that never floods the road if we took that step.
That takes care of two problems.
That takes care of both problems, and it might make it a little more cost-effective for everybody. And we aren't going to be going north, which would mean more easements and, and maybe compromising somebody else's property by dumping new water onto someplace else that's not there, you know? We're going to kind of keep it all on the side. And the fact that Mr. Bullock has a pond down there, it's a really good source of water for that pond. I mean, that is a, you know, fire department has a connection there, that's a, that's a, that could be very beneficial to everybody, make sure that pond stays full, so. Might be worth doing a little research on that and come up with some kind of a cost.
So, would the board be in favor of asking Byron to do a, a estimate for us for the next meeting, certainly not committing to anything, but just seeing what all the options are?
I, I think it's good. What do you think? I mean, that's, that's going to...
Great, you went to, you know, how far we got to go, how much culvert it's going to take, that kind of thing.
This is an unbudgeted item in highway, and we've stretched pretty thin right now because of the winter we've had.
Yeah.
We have no carryover. We have negative carryover.
We'll have to, you know, sometime these, um, for seeing things come up, we'll have to see how we can make it work. But at least come up with some numbers and get a rough idea. idea. I mean, you gotta figure digging and putting it in and whatever and, and like I say, getting around the utilities and everything that's in there going.
John?
I don't see this as a town problem, so, but if you wanna go ahead and study it, study it by all means. I mean, that's just the way I feel. I mean, there was no problem until you built your house.
What happens though when we do let it flood the road and then it does become the town's problem? Where, what are your options is all I'm thinking. Is it more cost effective to do it this way now?
So it's, right now, it's not a town problem. It's more of a landowner problem because of your house.
We'll just let it flood the road then. All right. That's what we'll do.
All right. We're gonna move on.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, letter A under new business. Bored to hear from State Representative Terranzini. He couldn't make it um, tonight, I was informed, but I do have a small, quick presentation here to make. Uh, he, he had wished he could be here and also for Mary Fran and Heather Lloyd to be here, Dick's widow and daughter. So this past legislative session, Representative Terranzini along with Representative Burdett of West Rutland, Kenfield of Fairhaven, Chestnut Tangerman of Middletown Spring, Scapoli of Rutland City, Fagan of Rutland City, Harrison of Chittenden, Kamala Fairhaven, Jerome Brandon, McCoy of Polton, Not of Rutland City, Shaw of Pittsford and Sullivan of Dorset, along with Senator Callmore, Hooker and McNeil, created a concurrent House Resolution, HCR 51. And I'll read it briefly here. It says, whereas Dick Lloyd served his community in many roles with dedication and distinction, and whereas he was a graduate of Rutland High School and resided in Rutland Town for half a century, and whereas for four decades, Dick Lloyd was employed at more business forums and rose to the rank of foreman, and he also worked as a Rutland County Deputy Sheriff, and whereas Dick Lloyd was an avid skier and served as both a member of an instructor for the National Ski Patrol and his knowledge of first aid provided to be a useful resource in his role as a Red Cross instructor, and whereas Dick Lloyd's most notable achievement was his versatile municipal service on behalf of the citizens of Rutland Town, and whereas in the realm of public safety, he responded to the fire alarm at all hours as a member of the Rutland Town Fire Department, and whereas Dick Lloyd served in the sensitive role of tax collector, and whereas as a justice of the peace, he was involved in electoral, matrimonial and taxation matters, and whereas on several occasions, he sat on the Rutland Town Planning Commission where his presence was respected and welcomed, and whereas in recent years, Dick Lloyd had assumed leadership in the important realm of waste disposal management, managing the town of Rutland's transfer station, and whereas Dick Lloyd approached this office with great attention as he oversaw a major modernization of the transfer station facilities, and whereas Dick Lloyd fostered an atmosphere that made the transfer station a popular community gathering place to catch up on local happenings, and whereas this respected community leader died on December 7th, 2018 at 74 years of age, and his survivors include his wife of 50 years, Mary Fran, and their daughter and grandson. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate and House of Representatives that the General Assembly extends its sincere condolences to the family of Richard S. Lloyd and be it further resolved that the Secretary of State be directed to send a copy of this resolution to the members of Richard Lloyd's family. Signed, Missy Johnson, Speaker of the House, David Zuckerman, President of the Senate, and attested by William McGill, Clerk, House of Representatives. So this was a copy that was given to the Select Board to display here um, somewhere in the building. So in honor of Dick Lloyd. So there we have it. Bill and Kirsten will find out a nice home for this, okay?
We're gonna put that up to the transfer station for a while. Can you get there just to let people see it?
That's a nice idea.
That'd be good. Yeah.
And then we could.
Add it to the collection here somewhere. Yeah, we got a couple. Okay.
Yeah. So anyways, Dick is certainly missed every day here and so that was a nice resolution. So, okay. We have a seven o'clock, our seven o'clock Town Energy Plan Part Two hearing coming up, so we're gonna get to Bill Sweet, Town Administrator Assistant of the Select Board. How are you, Bill?
I'm good. How are you?
Great.
All right. So uh, there's quite a few things in the packet that are for others that are already on the agenda, so I'm, I'm gonna just pass over those. Um, the things for, I need to go over, uh, start at number seven from, uh, from me. Um, this is a um, an MOU uh, for the, for the Regional Planning Commission to do work for stormwater. Uh, I did get some more clarification from Andres on it. There was another one done uh, several years ago. Uh, there was a one-time, one-year piece of, uh, piece of work that they did. Uh, and this one is for, uh, for five years. Uh, so, uh, he and I discussed that this wasn't really budgeted for, uh, for this year. So he said it would be uh, okay to table it, to put it into planning for next year's budget to account for it. Because this, this is the only place this expense could come from was basically his line item, which would limit the work he could do. So.
Yeah. So this was $4,500, right?
Per year for five years, yes.
We certainly didn't budget $4,500 for this.
We did not, no. And that's what I told them, so.
In my opinion, that we, we just can't do it this year. We don't have the money, right?
Yeah, no, I don't think we do. Um, could you put this in our budget packet for when we start building the budget in the fall for next year? So we'll consider whether we wanna add it then.
He did say that the services they do, there's really no other comprehensive way to get it done for, he said it's good of a deal, it's, it's a fairly, cost-effective deal. He says there's really no other way to get the things done that they can do in terms of like the distribution of information, the creation of information and whatnot.
Thinking of that workshop we went to, we got any money there that we could?
Probably could, probably.
Maybe we should look into that.
Yep. Uh, number eight was just some, uh, some notes, uh, just things to keep in mind.
We're being scolded.
No, no scolding, uh-uh. Just, uh, just advising, that's all. That's all. Just, just some things to keep in mind. Um, helpful, helpful, helpful things. Uh, number nine is the um, final draft of the local hazard mitigation plan. It does not need to be voted on. Uh, but this is, this is everything that Stephanie wanted to make sure we're all good with and then it's gonna go on to the state and then go on to FEMA. Once it gets their approval, then it comes back for adoption.
Okay.
So you don't need to vote on adopting it or, or anything. It just is this, she wanted to make sure that this, this copy got in front of you. Uh, so it's what, uh, you see which, what, which will be sent on.
And what's the deadline to comment on stuff if we wanna take it out, not to send on?
Uh, she has uh, two more, I think another 10 or 12 days for the comment period on this.
Did you see something, John, that stuck out?
No.
No, okay.
So she, she did implement the, uh, the thing we talked about.
A lot more extensive than we used to do. This is a lot more extensive than what these plans entailed before.
Agreed.
You know, there, there's a lot more information they're looking for and a lot more stuff that we need to be on the ball about.
Did Byron see that? Cuz Byron worked on this.
Yes.
And who else worked on this? Did Barbara work on it?
Me and, me and Marty.
Okay. Have you folks had a chance to look at it and?
Yes.
Make sure it's okay?
Yes.
Okay. It looks okay in the final draft?
Yeah.
Okay.
When I read through it, it was very, I mean, pretty straightforward and a lot of facts, more than.
I read through the last one.
Yeah. So the, uh, the only thing we, we talked about was the, uh, the water line was, those were mitigation things. So that wasn't a mitigation action adding the water line. It was, so it'll be included, it'll be part of the next plan's infrastructure. So.
Yes, it was an infrastructure thing. Yes.
Yes, so, yes.
Yes, yes.
We did talk, we did talk about that.
All right.
Uh, all right. Uh, so, uh, those are, those are, those are the balance of the things from the packet from me. Everything else is for everybody else yet to come. Uh, so on your desks, additional items that were there, uh, we received the um, land lease, net metering, uh, and optional lease agreement from Green Lantern. So that's there for everybody. Um, is this, you want me to forward this on to Kevin as a whole or?
I think it's time to get Kevin involved in looking at these. I'd make a motion, we send him on to Kevin.
Yes.
Motion by John Paul, seconded by Joe to send off the land lease agreement with, uh, from um, Green Lantern to the town's attorney, Kevin Brown. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That includes the option to lease agreement, the group net metering agreement and the land lease agreement, Bill?
Yep, all three of them.
All three of them.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, next, uh, should be a copy of the uh, conflict of interest policy. There's a draft copy on everybody's desk. Uh, there's actually two versions. The uh, original one that shows the, what information was taken out and then a copy that uh, is the clean copy for approval, which Josh has the one to be signed if you so choose.
The one that you wrote on to sign, this is scratching out what the committee decided to take out?
Yes, that, that is, that's completely edited, completely clean. All the changes are implemented. So if you want, if you choose to adopt it, that's the one to sign.
This was, uh, was two months ago or so, John, the personnel committee met. We reviewed some of this and then you took some.
Yeah. Did, did you want to table this for two weeks?
When do we have to?
It has to be up to July 1st, yes.
Okay. Um, I haven't had a chance to read it through.
Well, we table it.
Okay, yes.
Yeah. Moved the table, seconded by Mary. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you need me to include this again in the next packet or do you want to hang on to?
No, we will assume that you'll include it in the next packet.
Did um, someone ask a question, but was there any, you know, I feel confident one attorney's viewed it, you're gonna view it. Is there any, any value in Kevin seeing this or you didn't think so?
I think we can do it in-house.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like that.
That's good.
There is a, uh, you have a draft letter, uh, uh, we, we made in conjunction with the, with the Planning Commission, Stormwater Commission, uh, for the properties that have, that are, we've kinda talked about the high impact properties from the new stormwater ordinance, the ones that exist in the stream buffer area. Uh, this letter, we're proposing to send to, we sent out that flyer before to those 40-some odd properties. We're sending, we're proposing to send uh, this letter and another copy of the flyer to those same properties to reinforce that this really affects them, cuz we've had zero feedback from, from those flyers. So uh, Andres said he's available to attend that meeting, so he would come uh, and, and talk with us also. Uh, we wanted to put this in front of you and see if you had any questions or comments on it.
And this is only, this only affects the property owners abutted to?
So we were gonna say that there's about 41 or 42 properties of this that, that are in what's called the stream buffer area, which has like a 50-foot area on either side of, of the, of those streams. And those are the ones that have some more regulated activity. So.
This is, we, we, we decided long ago not to do the entire town, blanket the entire town.
Yes.
This is just, yeah, okay.
So this is, this is as a result of the ordinance taking effect. Uh, and we sent that, we sent the, those flyers out uh, to each, to each property listed and, and nobody said any questions. So our worry is that people are looking at like, okay, probably think like, oh, everybody got this and it's not really important when it really is important. So.
Right.
Yeah. The, the only question I have is that we're asking people to RSVP and I'd really rather have them come than feel that they haven't RSVP'd and they're not gonna come because of that.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, just scratch that line out.
Yeah.
Yep. No problem.
Yeah.
So we can send the rest of it out and uh, we'll have that.
So the planning commission, we've got another correspondence, like this letter should go out to those property owners, but this public meeting, July 11th thing just kinda came together during last meeting and Andres came available that night. So, but we wanted just open to everyone, um, not just those landlords, but also those affected by other parts of the ordinance, those along Moon and Mossy Brooks and anyone else who counted who's interested in this law. So we picked that date, this location. We'll do some other outreach.
Okay.
Of our publicity. Um, maybe give up something in the newspaper, uh, perhaps for forum.
Facebook.
The circle's gonna have.
The circle will have something on it? Okay, good.
Uh, yeah, I just wouldn't do an entire townwide mailing.
No, no.
No, it was not going to be. Yep.
So I, I think this letter looks fine. Anybody disagree?
No. Thanks to the Planning Commission and Bill for pulling this together. This is good.
Okay.
Uh, you also have, uh, Bill Bauer brought a letter in from uh, TAM Services regarding their recent acquisition by Casella Waste Management. So it was a letter given to him, so he wanted to pass that along to you. Uh, you do also have, um, that was really just for informational, there's really not much for us to do. It's just, it's a done deal. So yeah, it's just a.
Yeah.
For your information.
It's one way or the other.
Uh, yep. Uh, you do have, I, I did also give you the previous MOU about, about the uh, RPC, the, you do have, that, yeah, Mary, what you have right there. That's the previous copy from, from five years ago of that. So if you wanted the previous version, it's there. Uh, there is a couple, and it could be two other single pages left for me and that's, that's gonna be about it. Uh, one is from uh, Norm Cohen, uh, the, with the 10th criteria. He was uh, talking about the last hearing. So uh, you have a copy of that uh, showing the 10th one at the bottom. Uh, so that'd be for the, for the hearing. And then um, there is a picture of a parked van and that's uh, for uh, new business, uh, letter G.
So we can go to that now while you sit there, Bill.
Sure.
I don't remember what day it was last week, but Bill and I were in here and this gentleman stopped in to talk to us. He's a um, truck driver for Freihoffer and he drives a tractor-trailer. And for, according to him, for years, him and other truckers have commonly used our dead-end section of Cop John Drive to um, some have slept in their cabs overnight, but more commonly, it seems, uh, truckers have dropped their trailers there for a period of time and for one reason or another, and they go back and hitch back up and move on. Uh, so he was concerned that the owner of the Audi Inn has started to park his van uh, across that section of road, um, for, you know, a number of reasons why he would wanna do that. Greenfields, obviously for the advertising, but um, it doesn't sound like he's been overly friendly with some of these truck drivers who he's blocked in at times with their, their trailers and so on. And um, so this causes a bigger issue here. Um, so the police committee discussed it on Saturday morning and um, the recommendation was, if I recall, was to get some signs made up. And what was the wording, John, that you used? I wasn't familiar with it.
Standing only, no trailer parking.
I have a question about that. I know that there's a legal significance to it and truck drivers know it, but I went by there and there was a trailer left there this afternoon. Um, can we put it in language that everyone would understand, like no unattended vehicles? Would, would that do what you want it to do?
It would.
Cuz I, I agree. Yeah.
So when the trucks were parked there, were they causing a problem?
Well, they're on our right of way.
Right. But it's, it's, I understand that, but it's part of the commerce of that area of town and I didn't, I mean, they've been parking at that end for years. And then, and I don't know, it hasn't really caused any problem. And I was just wondering why this gentleman thought that he, it was okay for him to park a vehicle on a town road.
So it's not okay for either of them to park the vehicle on the town road? One, wrong don't make or two wrongs don't make a right?
I think it's a nice compromise to say if, if a truck driver needs maxed out on the.
Yeah, if he's maxed out, it's a good place.
But to leave your trailer is sort of.
I mean, if you leave your trailer and you got another driver maxed out, he's without a place. It's not a, it's not a parking place for trailers. It's not a dock.
So Byron, some signs could be made up that speak something to that. You know, we'll come up with the verbiage, maybe a layman's term for, for those who don't.
I sure will.
So the board's in agreement of that?
Yeah.
So what we're talking about, parking places and not parking, it's like this, the town fire department, I feel, has a problem with the McKinley Avenue Station, cuz everybody that does anything in that area up there parks in that yard. And there are times when I've been down to Danny Hindy's, working with him on vehicles, that the boys couldn't get a fire truck out of there or get a personal vehicle in there. So I don't know if we need to start policing or put sign or something to keep them from parking in that parking.
I'll pay attention to that.
The sign?
The signs are on the doors that say no.
No, no, there's signs on, on either end of the parking lot.
So, so we either got, we, we need to either start enforcing it. I mean, during, during the recent line changes and poles changes, uh, there were a number of contractor vehicles in there. And what really bothers me is the landscapers parking there to work on the neighbor's properties. Instead of parking in their own driveway, they park at the fire station cuz it's easy to get in and out and there's, you know, you know what it is. But I think it's an obstruction to that property and I don't think anybody should be parked there.
I agree. You're right.
That's fair. Yep. Um, so we could work on that as well.
Yep.
The, uh, back to this though, I also think that whether it's the town, we send a, a letter, we ask the police chief to send an officer or constable, that someone should have a conversation with this gentleman and say, this is not acceptable to park your van. This isn't a free billboard for you to put on the road.
I think it should be by letter, so we have a record of it.
Yeah. I also, so I took this photo and uh, then the next day or day after, he was actually parked. Uh, I don't know if he got word that this was happening, but he was parked uh, on the edge of the lawn of his property. So it was not parked across as obnoxious as this.
You can do anything you want in your own property.
Yeah, right. We don't care what you do, but, so Bill, you'll draft a letter for the board to sign?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Anything, final thoughts on that?
Nope.
Very good.
I was smiling because, you know, they are subject to Act 250 down there. So there is signage control in their Act 250 permit. He might be violating it, but that's not our problem.
We won't be violating it by adding signs, will we?
No, cuz it's on our road.
Okay. Just check it.
Okay. Um, we have, uh, Bill, what else, anything?
Uh, that is everything I have.
Okay. Wanted to bring this to the board's attention and everyone at home. You know, Bill designed this and he got these printed. These are gonna be distributed to every, about 365 students at the school will be sent home with one of these in their backpacks. Front and back, talks about the townwide celebration and uh, thank you for designing this and getting it printed, Bill. And it gives, on the backside, it gives um, sort of the times and the agenda of the event. So we are, what are we, three weeks away?
Not long.
Less than three weeks away from organized chaos, right Byron?
Transfer stations, good place too, Billy. We'll stick, we'll stick one up there. So everybody goes through the transfer.
The event on Facebook alone has had 400 people respond to it, meaning like they say they're interested or they're going or whatever. But it's had like four or 5,000 interactions. I mean, it's just, it's.
That was Josh hitting the.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, it's, uh, it's, right. It's, uh, It's, uh, it's, it's out there for sure. So, we've got some extra copies of those, uh, here, and then I brought the the bunch up to the school, so I'll, I'll go home. But, yeah, it's, uh, um, uh, we have Jump for Fun coming, they were gonna bring one bounce house, now they're bringing two because of all the people that, like, so we're, we're kinda like upping the, everything, so, yep.
Good.
Yeah, and, uh, we, this year, we bought, um, we spent almost a thousand dollars on food, which is more than we've ever spent because we upped our quantities, but, you know, we bought it from, uh, Kamuta's Market.
Yep.
Which is owned by a, uh, Rutland Town family, so we, you know, wanted to keep the money local if we could.
Yep.
They gave us a great deal, so.
Yeah.
Thank you to them, and we had a nice donation from a unanimous donor, and so things are really coming together, so. July sixth, starting at eleven AM at Northwood.
Hope for sun.
Hope for sun.
That's gonna be tough. We gotta have three good weekends in a row. That party, our party on the hill, and my daughter's wedding.
Oh, is that right?
Three, I don't think we're gonna, somebody's gonna get rained on.
So, and the Fourth of July is when the fireworks are, Thursday night.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything for Bill?
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks for having me, Bill. Um, Howard, were you gonna stay for the, uh, hearing? Okay. Uh, Barbara, we're gonna skip over you. Did you, did you have anything else?
Just a couple things.
All right, then we won't, we'll go to you.
And this, um, this is from my regional planning commission hat. Double-thing's, grants and aid is available again, um, for stormwater, uh, projects. You, uh, you did it, um, a couple of years ago, and you didn't, the town didn't partake last year and left, um, ten thousand four hundred dollars on the table.
And what is it for, Barbara?
Um, it's for best management practices, uh, ditching, um, fixing culverts, head walls, things like that for stormwater.
Can that money pay for a culvert we just talked about? Is that, would that fit under that criteria?
I think probably Better Roads is a better candidate for that culvert. It, I, I don't know.
I mean, it is a stormwater issue with that collection area, and we are mitigating that situation.
We have erosion problem.
Okay, so this is for erosion? It could be if it goes over the road.
And I don't know if it's a hydrologically connected segment, too, if it's not steep and it's not going into a natural, uh, water body as opposed to pond. Do you remember offhand if it's?
No, it involves hybrid soils, but I'm not sure if that qualifies as a.
So, for grants and aid, grants and aid, it's, it's for segments, usually, um, rather steep ones that go into surface waters that are.
Well, just a thought. We're looking for money to pay for a project.
It's a good thought.
There might be some money there.
I wasn't looking for any money to pay for that project.
No.
Um, is this a, is there a deadline, and is this a planning grant, or is it a construction grant? And what's our share?
Um, yours, this, well, the, the numbers vary every year depending on how many towns, um, participate across the state. Over two hundred usually do. So, just about everyone does. Um, it's a, the match isn't bad, I think it's twenty percent. Um, two years ago, um, it would have been twenty-six hundred dollars out of that ten thousand, so. Um, and that's usually met by, by labor, uh, equipment that you use.
Do we have a specific project?
Yeah. We have our capital plan, we have several projects.
Okay.
This year.
Okay.
Okay. So, there is a deadline, July third, to get a letter signed by the select board.
So, you're planning on applying for this, through this program? Okay, so, this meeting prior to July third, we should have it on our agenda, and that's our next meeting.
That's the next meeting.
And you don't have to have the site selected, it's just a letter of intent. And then the state collects all these letters and figures out what each town's gonna get for funding.
Okay, so, Bill, could you put that on our agenda, please, for that meeting? Sorry to, you know.
Please do.
Steamroller over you, but I didn't want to forget that one, cause.
We need your practice for next meeting, so.
Consider yourself steamrollered over them. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Byron.
And the only other thing is, is somewhat deadline-driven as well, it's that pilot project.
So, I would make a motion that you inform them, we do not want to participate in that pilot project.
I'd second that.
Motion by John Paul, seconded by Joe. Discussion?
We have too much on our plate right now. I can't see us struggling through another one, but thanks. Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, I mean.
Hi.
Any pos? Motion passed. Sorry, Barbara.
I was just gonna add, unofficially, the state's still mapping these three-plus-acre sites. Um, unofficially, I've seen one list where the town has twenty-four three-plus-acre impervious sites, one hundred and forty-seven acres.
Yeah.
So, um, it's, I mean, they, they passed this new stormwater permitting, and not many people know about it. They still haven't released the official list of sites that will be affected, so.
So, Chittenden County's gonna squawk a whole lot more than we are right now.
The city?
Chittenden County.
Oh, yes, yeah, they'll probably, yeah.
Pretty cool.
Have a lot of takers up there.
Yeah. Thanks, Barbara.
So, um, before you go, I, we got this criteria for the net metering preferred sites with Norm's additional ten.
Ah.
Um, item number seven was supposed to get changed to the developer on, in terms of notifying adjoining landowners.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Good catch. So. Just trying to find the page in the, change that.
So, how do you fix the rest of the sentence?
So.
You're right about the developer, cause we.
Seven, the developer shall notify.
Yeah.
All abutting.
But the rest of it doesn't fit, and requested the developer to take all.
Notify all abutting landowners and take all reasonable steps to mitigate.
So, and has taken.
There you go.
And has taken all generally available and reasonable steps to mitigate.
Okay.
And then five, I had, that you, you talked about adding adverse, undue adverse impact?
Yes.
In the middle of five?
That's the queechy.
Yeah.
Well, there's typos in there.
And then, um, as to number ten, I thought the conversation was that if a project exceeds what our target is, that, um, it would face stricter scrutiny, especially with regard to the tax consequences to the town.
So, this language is, is, is up to you.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Tonight.
Whenever you wanna, whenever you wanna take it up, tonight or or later.
Okay.
So, um, we can have these, these corrections made, these adjustments made, uh, for when you do take it up.
Okay.
Provided it's not this evening.
All right. Fair enough.
Evidence.
Thank you.
Okay. Barbara, anything else? We have, uh, two minutes before the hearing, we've warned. I wanted to go down to letter C under old business board to discuss hosting a townwide yard sale, flea market. Uh, really quick, I, I just pulled a Saturday, uh, Saturday, August third. I did a little research through Facebook, events that were coming up, looks like July is packed full throughout the county of things. So, if we were interested in doing this and just wanted to put on the website and put on our Facebook page and say, hey, look at, we're, we're trying to have a townwide yard sale, if you want to participate, put your stuff in your front yard or whatever, August third would be a, just a nice Saturday to pick, so. We don't have to do anything, we could do it and have some fun with it, doesn't, you know, really, has nothing to do with us besides we could use our platform on Facebook and the website to say, let's do this as a community, but.
Yard sales all over town the same day.
Yeah, town, like West Rowland, Clarendon, I mean, they have, and, and people flock to those, you know, areas.
Holt?
Do they do one?
There's one.
You know, Clarendon or West Rowland do one.
Pollin? Yeah, I think there's one of them out there. It's a really big deal.
So, if we set August third for a townwide yard sale, is the board okay with that?
Sure.
All right, so Billy, we'll warn something like that.
Okay. Start cleaning out my attic.
Sure. Okay, I have, uh, seven o'clock, so we are going to recess the select board meeting and proclaim ourselves, uh, into the hearing for the, um, adoption of the new town energy plan. Um, Howard, are there some folks in the hallway that wanted to be here for the hearing? Billy, what number was that? Do you give us new copies on that? You have one right there.
So, no, I, I, you can keep them from last time?
I didn't, well, I had.
I did, but I didn't bring it with me.
Things you leave in your desk when you go home.
Yeah.
But I didn't mind so much, I wasn't here for.
All right, so, we are going to, um, begin. Barbara, um, you have on the overhead projector, you have the presentation again. Uh, as long as the board is okay with it, um, I don't think we need to go through it line by line again, but do you want to give us a high overview and those in the audience who are here?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, give us a synopsis of how we got here, the key facts and.
Particularly the why we're pursuing it part.
Hasn't the planning commission asked?
Have you told us we had to do this?
No, it's the benefit that we got from it.
So, um, like Rutland Town, a lot of, a lot of municipalities around the state were not happy with the lack of attention the Public Utility Commission was giving them.
Barbara, could you come up to a mic, please, so the folks at home can hear you? Thanks.
I'm also gonna click this off for a minute. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, so this goes back, um, a couple of years. The legislature was hearing a lot from towns and cities around the state that the PUC, the Public Utility Commission, which decides on renewable energy projects across the state, that the PUC was not paying enough attention to the towns. What was in their town plans, or even if they went and, and presented their views to a Public Utility, uh, hearing, commission hearing. So, the legislature, um, passed legislation, and, um, it, it mixed in a couple of things at the same time. It gave, um, more say to towns, it gave them a higher standing when they go before the Public Utility Commission. Um, it went from due deference, which didn't even have, um, a definition in statute, to substantial deference. And that sounds good, it hasn't been tested yet by, by anyone in front of the PUC, um, but that was, that was the intent of the legislation, that the PUC would pay more attention to the town's intentions, especially through their town plans. But to get that, they said, we want more in these town plans about energy. So, they rolled in some of the goals the state has been, um, accepting and passing, um, for renewable energy and, you know, uh, reducing greenhouse gases and carbon and the like. So, it was kind of a carrot and a stick type approach. Um, the stick was a sixteen-page, um, list of requirements that would go into this, it's called the Enhanced Energy Plan, that would get you substantial deference before the PUC. So, that's why these plans have a lot of heft, they're long, um, they have a lot of data in them, um, but they're, they've got two masters. They're designed to give the town more say, and they're also designed to, um, match what the legislature and the state has been putting in the Comprehensive Energy Plan for the state of Vermont. And it, it updates these every five years, and that's where the ninety percent renewable by 2050 comes. The legislature readopts these Comprehensive Energy Plans. It doesn't, there, there is no statute that says Vermont's gonna be ninety percent renewable by 2050. It's in the state's Comprehensive Energy Plan that gets updated.
Can you just say that one more time? I'm sorry.
There is no statute that, that says literally the state will be ninety percent renewable by 2050, but what the legislature has done, what the state has done, has adopted this Com- Comprehensive Energy Plan every five years. That is part of that plan.
Okay.
So, um, the planning commission started working on, on the energy plan that's, um, up tonight in the public hearing. Uh, we started working on that about two years ago. It was delayed a little bit because we wanted to do the view shed mapping, which we thought would, uh, dovetail nicely with the energy plan, but also for future development in the town. It's, it, you know, it shows where, um, parcels are easily seen, um, on some of the scenic roads in town, and how, and essentially how often they can be seen as you travel on those. So, um, there was some skepticism, um, and, you know, early reluctance, I would say, by the planning commission, it's like, why do we have to include all this stuff? Fourteen pages, all this, um, um, but by the time we finished it, I, it, my memory says it was a unanimous vote, um, everyone was on board, and, uh, we wanted to send it on to the select board. A question came up, um, a couple of weeks ago about targets, and, um, and, you know, Norm has his tenth criterion that would, would address that. Um, without this Enhanced Energy Plan that you have, um, we have, we have no targets, so developers can just keep coming in, and if the PUC thinks that, you know, Rutland Town's a good place, it has plenty of, uh, electrical infrastructure, and it has plenty of land that can accommodate these, um, it can keep approving these projects. It can anyway, but this is substantial deference is supposed to make a, a difference there. We also have a town plan with an energy section currently that is, it doesn't hold any weight. You know, we took that all the way up to the Supreme Court, and it said that, you know, it was de facto zoning and, and this and that, but, you know, it's, it's, it's not going to carry any weight before the PUC because it has been tested in the courts. Um, it, it goes, what it does, in my estimation, is that it, it puts more restrictions on solar development than, than other development in town, so that, that I think is seen as, as unfair at, at certain levels of the state. So, you know, we, we, if you pass this plan, then we have targets. We can go to the PUC, we can go to the state, we can go to the legislature and say, you know, we've, we've generated all of this renewable electricity, you know, haven't we done our share? If you don't pass this, we've got nothing. We, we don't have that defense.
It's wide open if that, if it's not a dock.
Yeah, it is. It's because it goes, uh, it pretty much, now it's a town-by-town basis for getting this extra say.
Wanted to ask the board if they had any additional questions or comments for Barbara over the last two weeks, since we've had some time to think and talk about this.
Do we have, know how many other towns have adopted energy plans so that they can get this, um, enhanced deference?
Um, statewide, I don't know, I think it's probably twelve or, or fifteen. We've got two here in the Rutland region, um, we've got, uh, three in the works and four just starting, um, hopefully not a two-year process, uh, but just starting the process.
So, I'm generally not in favor of imposing more and more regulations, um, in terms of land development in the town, but unfortunately, we found ourselves without a seat at the table.
Yeah.
Um, the last couple of times that the town and residents of this town wanted to challenge this type of development, and the only way to get a seat at the table is to pass this part of our town plan. part of our town plan. And that at least gives us a chance to voice our objection. I'm not naive and won't suggest that that in and of itself might change a decision, but it could impact it in a lot of different ways. We might be able to give the neighbors better protection aesthetically, you know, we might be able to get offsets or prepaid school tax dollars that we lose every time one of these goes into town, and, which is why I thought Norm's point about putting up stricter scrutiny once we have met our goal that the state set for us so generously, but it appears as though we're not gonna have any trouble meeting it, that they undergo stricter scrutiny. I thought that was a really good suggestion, Norm. Thank you for that. We'll follow up on that. But I guess for all the reasons I just stated, I'm gonna be voting in favor of the energy plan to be a part of our town plan so that we can have a seat at the table.
I, only one question. When we keep developing these things and plans, and this is on a pretty personal note for me and my family, is there any consideration given to landowners when you develop these plans as to the financial benefits and making it easier for some of us landowners to be able to do some stuff with our land? It seems like solar's kind of a tough sell in areas to do that, and I'm always concerned that we keep adopting, I don't know if you wanna call them rules, regulations, but the View Shed stuff that we've just done has another layer of stuff that a landowner has to go through to get, to do something with their own property, and we keep taking stuff from landowners with no compensation. There, you know, if you take away some of the uses that a landowner can do with their land, and, you know, this View Shed thing, or the energy, where you can do solar, where you can't do solar, or what types of renewable energy, does anybody ever take into consideration? And does that plan address anything in there for the landowners that want to do something? You know, that are looking for some kind of, you know, enhanced financial support for their properties, to keep their properties the way they are? And I have made this comment for the three and a half years I've been on this board, that we keep taking rights away from the landowners with no compensation. I'm not opposed to the plan, I just want to know if that plan addresses the interest of the landowners, that they would be able to do things with their property. I know you did make some changes, I believe, about the agricultural areas and small business, and I just want to make sure that we're not all one-sided with everything that we do in town, as to prohibit whether it's solar development, or this kind of development, or building development, to the point where a landowner's land really isn't worth anything until you jump through all these hoops. The state has a whole list of hoops you gotta jump through, and now the town keeps adopting more, and, you know, and I just feel from a personal note that our farm has been compromised because we are part of the View Shed. So, it's one more thing that anybody that wants to, if we want to do something there, that's another hurdle, and another expense to me as a landowner, and there are other landowners out there that feel the same way, that we now have to, additional expenses. And I just want us to be careful about the restrictions that we keep putting onto landowners, and what you can and can't do, and the town offers no compensation. Now, if I can't do something with our farm, and the town has all these rules, and so we have to struggle to survive, I'm not sure that's a fair way of going, and I just want to make sure that there's stuff in this plan that, or anything that we develop that kind of takes some of this stuff into consideration before we go out and adopt it.
This doesn't give landowners any comfort of what you're looking for. Alls this does is give the town a seat at the table to oppose any solar development, Joe, so it doesn't, but in a way, it'll allow a landowner to see what hoops they gotta jump through in order to get it, so it would be helpful in that regard, but it wasn't intended to address the landowners' concerns about moving forward, it was intended to address the town's wanting to have a say for its residents when there is a development that the residents really oppose.
I just would like to see the town at some point start looking more, looking to help its landowners, the people that own the large tracts of land and do stuff that kind of does that, because, you know, what I've noticed here, there's a lot of squeaky wheels in town that come out, and as soon as somebody wants to do something, they start raising a ruckus, and I've seen it on two or three different things, not just development, that the squeaky, you know, they come out and they complain about, and whatever, and, you know, I know that the Cold River Project down there, a company bought that, and they wanted to develop it. I don't think that that was the greatest site, where you have to go kill a bunch of trees to put solar, there's gotta be better sites, you know, but they met all the hoops and they jumped through that, and so it works both ways, and I just want to make, you know, I know the town is looking out for the town, like you say, JP, to have a seat at the table, but the town is made up of landowners and people, and we're supposed to represent them too. We're supposed to represent both sides.
And the Planning Commission took this under consideration when it was drafting the plan. We spent a lot of time looking at those 10 criterion. In fact, they came out of the Thomas Derry request for net metering, and that site, which I think is gonna be constructed pretty soon, is in a View Shed.
Yeah.
So, we tried to draft these criterions so that the town was protected, had some added protections. These were things over and above what's in the 14-page checklist, but also provides, you know, some leeway and some way for landowners, particularly farmers, particularly people in ag lands that are gonna be on these scenic sites, to qualify.
Yeah, and that's what my question is, just, you know, if it was at least addressed and looked at, so, you know.
Yeah, extensively.
Norm?
I think that it was really, it wasn't an unspoken consideration, it was upfront, and with almost everything we did, we understood we were weighing some important criteria on both sides. And with Barbara's leadership and input from the entire commission, we really tried to strike a balance, considering all the considerations that came up. Now, and your concerns were certainly given consideration, and tried to weave it in with the complicated task we were given. And without her leadership, what would happen?
Mary, I wanted to give you a chance to speak.
I'm supportive of what the Planning Commission has come up with, and I remember, oh, five years ago, five and a half years ago, when we had the first solar project on Cold River Road, and the very distressed property owners in homes across the road from it, we were scrambling, and I think Dana Peterson, now on Planning Commission, and I did some preliminary drafting of some kind of emergency ordinance that we could put into place and help slow these things down. That went up to the Supreme Court, and, you know, we weren't successful, but we were trying to respond to the concern. In a way, the legislation that came out that set up this enhanced standing for towns was a result of us and other towns pushing on the issue, saying, "We've got something coming into our towns that people are uncomfortable with, and we need a better handle on it." And I think this is, you know, given the strictures put in place by the legislature in order for us to get that seat at the table that JP talks about, we had to do something like this, and this is, I think the Planning Commission did a very good job of pulling this together. So, I'm gonna support this. We do need to, JP had some good comments about item number 10, and I think we need to work on that a little bit, but I like the idea of having the targets in there. Once we meet the targets, then tougher scrutiny on these projects and whether we need them. So, I'm supportive.
There's a few folks in the audience who are here for this hearing, and I wanted to ask if you had any comments or thoughts or questions that you wanted to get involved here with? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, well, I wrote a little letter, and the letters in reference to the energy plan and the View Shed areas in Rowan Town.
Ma'am, ma'am, excuse me, would you mind coming up to a mic, 'cause the people at home, I'm sorry, I know it's uncomfortable, but it's just the folks at home can't hear you, and it's real important. Do we have a mic right here at the end of the table? Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right, great.
So, just move up to the front row.
Just move up one seat to the front, and you'll be fine. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, anyway, my husband picked up a copy of the View Shed mapping, which was this, and we were very pleased to see the West Proctor Road was noted as in the View Shed. Then we heard on PEG TV a week ago, I think this last Saturday, that the West Proctor Road was one of the four View Sheds removed from the list. Well, this upset us, and I'm sure it would have upset other folks who lived across the road from one of the most beautiful views in Rutland Town. The area we are referring to is on the West Proctor Road, next to the Proctor Town Line. There is a knoll in fields of green with a magnificent view of the mountains. The field is farmed every year to feed horses and farm animals. Folks from nearby and out of state, heading to the castle and to the museum in Proctor, they pull off the road next to the knoll, where there is a turnaround area. Folks enjoy eating their lunch and enjoying the wonderful view there. This area is central to the character of the Vermont landscape. It certainly deserves to be designated as a scenic resource and not a place for solar panel arrays. We asked the Select Board members and the Planning Commission members to visit this site on a clear and sunny day and see the visual qualities, and return the area to a View Shed area. But it is beautiful, I don't know if you've all seen where I'm discussing, where I'm talking about, just before the Proctor, it goes into Proctor, it's the top of the, if you're going up the West Proctor Road, coming off Route 4, and you're not gonna, you're not gonna miss that view when you look to the right. It's just magnificent. So, we just hate to see the fields of solar panels might be there someday.
Barb, so why was that pulled from the list?
I think there was some confusion about which, there were 20 original scenic roads listed in the town plan, and the people that did the View Shed suggested that be reduced to 16, and the Planning Commission agreed with that. I think it's East Proctor Road instead of, I think East Proctor Road was taken off the list. Correct me if I'm wrong, Planning Commission members, but I think there was some discussion at the last, was it a Select Board meeting that you watched on PEG?
Yeah, and I thought I'd heard you say that it was east and west.
My memory has it as East Proctor Road was taken off that list, Quarterline, the Route 4 bypass, and Vumont Drive.
So, we are still on?
Where's the list?
Yeah, I've got a list here. Those are on, but nothing else.
Bill, do we have a copy of it?
Anybody wanna see this?
It's also in the plan.
Okay, yeah.
This is, it's on, this one, but...
Yeah, I didn't understand that the East Proctor Road was taken, that the West Proctor Road was taken off.
Yeah.
That should be on.
It should be on.
Especially that knoll you talk about.
Yeah.
It's a great place to run radar, too.
I was sure I heard her say that, you know, they were both taken off. I don't know who the other two were, 'cause there were four, I think.
Quarterline and Route 4 bypass, so two down by me, yeah.
We were trying to remember, it's been a few months since we worked on this, so at that meeting, we're trying to remember, we mentioned a few roads.
I think we need to get confirmation before we vote on it.
Yes, let's do that.
So, Bill, can you find the list?
So, it's...
Let's go with the actual plan, make sure it's in the actual, yeah.
Yeah, page 78 and 79 of the plan, I don't know if anyone's got it.
The View Shed area starts a half a mile from Route 4 and goes to the Proctor Town Line, flat and low, a half a mile up to the Proctor Town Line is raised a little bit back to the view.
Okay.
An example, I walk by every day on my daily walk, and the first thing I know, someone's pulling it behind me and parking there to look at it.
Where's that list, Barbara?
Pages 78 and 79.
I must have a different plan, it's not on my page 78. Okay. August 2nd of 18, is that the plan you're on?
No, 'cause it would be the...
No.
What do you have, Norm?
We're gonna find the list for you.
I'm glad to know that, 'cause I thought I heard that it wasn't, I wanted to come to make sure.
Oh, we're glad you came.
Yeah, yeah.
Sir, did you have any comments or questions?
Well, I live up, I can come up here, I don't, it's kind of new to me, but I live near the pull-off where he might do radar, and I appreciate it, and if you want to give him wire.
Hi, Jim.
You might coffee sometime, take, there's a lot of speeders on that road. It is a great view there, and we cut a big old tree down just last year, I didn't, my wife did, and she's the smart one, anyways, and it's beautiful over that way. But, and I'm just curious, why you see these solar, I'm not totally against solar at all, but they're not very, like, there's one right over the Proctor Line that Wendy was talking about, and it's so obvious. Is there a reason why it has to be so obvious, these solar projects?
Again, a lot of that has to do with whether or not the municipality had a say or a seat at the table to be able to ask them to think about these considerations. So, I would say that the hodgepodge development of solar, and if you want to see it at its worst, take a ride up Route 100 north of 89, and I mean, there's every conceivable configuration, it's ugly, it's all get out, but, so...
Yeah, that's, there's two things in here that the Planning Commission criteria being recommended to us, and one is if it's in a scenic area such as the View Shed, the project doesn't have an undue adverse impact on the visual or scenic resources. So, that's one check against what you're describing, and the other is that the developer will notify abutting property owners and take all generally available and reasonable steps to mitigate the project's visibility. So, that address, so you gotta do something to knock down the, you know, in your face.
The reason we're in the gray area...
Yes, it can.
That's the problem I see with the solar, and speaking of Joe, I mean, they're not compensated for their farmland and stuff like that, to me, that's an issue, but...
Well, it's on our list of View Sheds, so...
Well, so this list is, this list is back to the 20.
Is back to the 20.
Okay.
I've got the list of 16.
Oh, I thought this was, you got the list of 16?
So, which of the four, Barbara, that were striking?
We'll cross them off.
Yeah, go through them.
Okay, Boardman Hill, Blueberry Lane.
Wait a minute, no, wait, tell the ones we're striking.
Okay. East Proctor Road, Quarterline, Route 4 bypass, and Vumont Drive.
All right, so West Proctor Road is safe.
Yeah. East Proctor, I'm sorry, did you say East Proctor Road is off?
Yes.
Okay. Route 4 bypass is off.
Quarterline Road.
Quarterline Road is off.
And Vumont.
And Vumont, okay.
So, I thought we had corrected the town plan, but, so we need to make that correction in the town plan itself too, before you vote on it.
Which raises a question that JP reminded me of. This is the energy plan, are we, what do we have for a final document that meshes the existing town plan and the energy plan, and takes out all of the old energy planning language and puts this in?
Right.
How's that gonna happen?
It was the Planning Commission's intention that the old section be lifted out of the town plan and this replace it. We went through the existing energy section and took portions of that...
Okay.
That were applicable to the Enhanced Energy Planning and applicable to the town. So, you will recognize some of the language in there from the existing plan, but we'll be switching the two.
Switching the two?
In the middle of the town plan, where the energy section is now.
You're gonna have the new energy section if we adopt it.
The Enhanced Energy one in there, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
Having a seat at the table is beneficial to the town? You strongly believe that, right?
It's critical, critical.
We went to the Supreme Court on that one.
You did?
Yeah.
And we lost, 'cause we didn't have this in the plan, yeah.
So, I think, I think I'm the only one that did not offer comments yet. You know, really went back and forth on this, read it, read it again, thought about it, talked to colleagues, experts in the field, and I think my biggest issue is a philosophical difference with maybe Montpelier's so aggressive with their by 2050 than 90% renewables. That's not something we're gonna say here, right? I admit we have a problem, but by rushing as quickly as the powers seem to be, mistakes are gonna be made, decisions are gonna be made that might not be beneficial for individual municipalities and so on, but I, like John Paul, anybody that knows me and has followed my career... me and has followed my career here on the Select Board over the last 11 years knows that I've been adamant, adamantly against zoning in Rutland Town, and because it gives its more regulations and it's more, less control for the property owner and so on and so forth, but like John and Mary's comments, too, this is the only way we're gonna have a seat at the table, to use John's phrase. This is the only way we're going to be able to have, you know, some skin in the game and have some say as to where these projects go, because there are some that feel that these are necessary, some that feel that aren't, and they're certainly, in my humble opinion, some of these projects in Rutland Town have destroyed the landscape, to say it, lack of better words, but this is the only way that we're gonna have some type of say as a municipality and hopefully be able to slow things down and articulate our message and think through these decisions before they're made, because these are, these are at least 25-year commitments that these people are making, and that's a long time, and it affects everyone in the community for the good and bad. So I, too, will be supporting this document. I've been very leery of view sheds in general since this concept started two years ago, because if General Electric calls tomorrow and says, "We want to build another plant", and it happens to be in the way of a view shed, well, that's gonna be a problem, because, you know, and, you know, people will say, "Well, maybe we don't want to see that," but if it's gonna help the economy, which solar panels aren't helping our economy in terms of tax base, right? That's why we have the offsetting language, but certain things in town would make more sense to me, but I will be supporting this document as well, so...
In, in defense of view sheds, I mean, they're like any of our other land use designations. We don't have zoning, we don't have any teeth to, to really enforce any of that.
I agree.
It's a planning, planning tool.
I, I get it, but it's, it's another, to me, it's some, in some aspects, it's just another way that we're circumventing the idea of zoning, because we're influencing what some, we're trying to influence what some can and cannot do now with their property. But I understand the need for them when it comes to solar, I'm just sensitive to those property owners who might want to do something else and sort of echo Select Maldonado's comments as well. But needless to say, the Planning Commission worked through two years of a very tough and sticky situation, and I think this is probably the best we're gonna come up with, so long and short, I'm gonna support it.
So what's our deadline for having to vote on this?
You've got, let's see, we, we gave this to you the end of March, I believe, so you've got 120 days from then, so...
So, okay, because I, I do think we need some time to develop the language on number 10.
Yeah.
And I, I'm trying to do it tonight, but I don't think we should rush it, so I'd move to table it until our next meeting.
I'd ask that we table it as long as we have enough time to the July 9th meeting.
Second.
Can we send it to the Energy Committee, and we can work on the language?
I'm more, yes, why not? But I think we're gonna need Kevin's input as to the stricter scrutiny, because I know there's all kinds of criteria that...
We want to make sure we've covered.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, we can start at the Energy Committee and then get it up to Kevin, sure. Thank you.
Any further thoughts on this, or can we conclude the hearing at this time? Final thoughts? Okay, we'll declare ourselves out at 7:34 for the Energy Hearing. Thank you, Barbara and Norm Howard, and am I missing anyone else that's on the Planning Commission panel? Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Take care. I'm gonna go to Kirsten Hathaway, town clerk and treasurer.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, what's going on?
So I put new revenue updates on your desks, so you can take a look at that. So we're doing pretty good. We're almost near the end of the year, so it looks like we're gonna come out on top. I wasn't sure if there were any questions on that.
So the bottom line is?
Well, we don't know quite yet, because we haven't, we don't know what our expense is next.
Okay.
And typically, the last payroll of the year is the biggest, because everyone's trying to get the last invoices in, so...
So if we close business today for the fiscal year, that would be the number I just circled?
Correct. Yes, I did not take into account any possible delinquent taxes coming in, because Jim's been having some medical things that he's working through, so I didn't want to put any pressure on him for that, but he will get it to us, it's just when.
So we're looking at significant surplus and not a deficit overall?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Andrew will be happy.
Yes, he'll be very happy.
And just a reminder, our surpluses go into our capital improvement fund.
Yes, we can use it to make up for the deficits we've had in the past couple of years if we want to, or we can sweep it into the capital improvement fund, that's up to you guys.
We'll have to talk with Andrew.
Discuss that, yeah, later.
Which Andrew did say that he's available whenever the Finance Committee wants to meet.
It's gonna, well...
After the end of the fiscal.
Yeah, after the end of fiscal year, so.
Right.
Let's get through the 4th of July, a few weeks out.
Yes.
What else you got for us, Eric Kirsten?
I did put together a, I have found out recently, the, the state, I think it's the Department of Taxes, they like for us to do a self-assessment questionnaire at the end of each year, so I obtained that this year so that I can make sure that I could get it done. I put that in your packet, so you had a chance to look at it. I wasn't sure if there were any questions, and if there aren't, then I would request that Josh is able to sign it. Basically, it just goes over all of our current financial management.
Yeah.
In the town, and highlights if there's anything that we can work on, or if there's anything that we're doing well in. So I already know of a couple, I know policies, obviously, we have to get some written down, we have some in place already, but we just need to have them written down, but for the most part, you know, I think it came out that we're doing pretty good.
Okay, good.
Or motion on this?
Move that we approve and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Seconded by Joe for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion pass?
And I will just put that in a file.
As financial trainings come up, would you alert us to them? I think I did one, but it was a number of years ago.
Right, I think I mentioned that, that there had been people who'd gone to them, but it wasn't recently, yeah.
You got a pretty good training in there for a couple of months when we were absent of our clerk and treasurer.
Yeah, I got to, like, learn Excel, spreadsheets, and sewer charges. That was pretty exciting.
Always fun. It's always something fun in my office.
What else you got?
I did put this in your packet as well. The recording fees are going up. This was a new, a new state statute that went into, that's going into effect as of July 1st, so I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it, in case you get any questions on it from any of the town residents. There was one thing that I was gonna mention. Oh, one thing that we have to discuss with Andrew is that currently with recordings, we have 10% of our recordings are set aside for records, restoration.
Yeah.
Which gets swept into the pot at the end of the year if we don't end up using it. This new law is mandating that we have $4 per page set aside into its own fund that can't be touched by the Capital Improvements Fund at the end of the year, so that way it rolls over at the end of each year.
And that makes sense.
Right.
There was that weird little thing for micro filming.
Yeah, that, I mean, we could use this for micro filming. The other thing that we would use it for would be any books that need to be fixed up. I know we have a few. Vital records books, I may or may not go through the, the cost of fixing some of those, because we have the new vital records law that's also coming into effect on July 1st, so we're not gonna be really printing anything from the old books, we're going to be using the computer to print anything out, so those are actually gonna be going up on one of the high shelves in the vault, because we won't really be touching them. But I know that there are a couple of land records books that could probably be sent out for, for fixing bindings and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, the biggie that I'm looking at, and I don't think it's on here, but the biggie is per-page recording costs go from $10 a page to 15. And that's big, especially if you are a brand-new homeowner and you've got a brand-new mortgage, and you have to pay 15 bucks a page to record a 20-page document.
And vault research is doubling as well, it's gonna be two, it's currently $2 an hour, it's going up to $4 an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
So the one thing that we do have to keep in mind is that we cannot mandate, previously I was just requesting from any of the attorneys that send things in to send a postage page envelope. They, I can't mandate that. I never was, but I do like it, because then I can make sure that it gets sent back to the right person.
Yeah.
But that might be something where our postage might go up because of that.
However, your fees are gonna, you're gonna, yeah, so it'll be part of the budgeting process.
Right, so it'll offset itself. But yeah, I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
You're good, thank you.
Um, let's see, in my other packet, I think the only other thing that I had in the packet was just, I had found a photo of kind of what I was conceptually thinking. I cannot draw it. I sat and stared at a piece of paper for probably a half an hour, just trying to figure out how to draw it out for you in the best way that I could, and I couldn't figure it out. I'm not, that's not a talent that I have. So I went online and I tried to find something similar to what I was looking at regarding the glass on top of the counter. This is the best I could find. I do, I would like it to be a little bit more glass, and I don't like that bulkhead that's over top of the, the glass right there currently.
Sofit.
A sofit, sorry.
If you're, if you're explaining it to a builder...
Okay, I will, I will remember that.
Yeah.
It's funny that you don't like it, because I think it actually makes the room look better.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
But to me personally, I liked the opinion of the board, but this helps me conceptually see it better, and to me, it looks a whole lot more inviting to me than what I had in my mind.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's no, no different than if you go to your doctor's office and you just slide the window open and shut.
Exactly.
And adds a layer of security that you're comfortable with.
I was gonna suggest you go up to the hospital and go into the ER.
Okay.
And they have it there, but that is more like being in, it's much more secure.
Okay.
There is no sliding window, but it gives you a kind of a visual, but this is probably better than anything. The only difference is we're gonna do the L the other way. This one goes back in and we're coming out.
Yes.
But, but I think that's a really good concept.
The same kind of idea.
And it, and it does look pretty nice.
Yes, yeah. I, I've actually had quite a few people recently who've come into the building who don't normally come in the building, they've been kind of confused, because you basically, you walk in, if you've never been here, you walk in, and then it's just doors, and you have to figure out which door am I gonna go through? So with this, because I've had people who've come in and gone, "I don't really know where I'm supposed to go," but with this, we would have, we wouldn't have a door, it would be basically, you walk in and then you see this glassed-in area, and then there's people behind it that you can just walk right up to and talk to. So I feel like it's a little bit more inviting than what we have right now, which is basically just, you know, like I said, a series of doors, but...
Mary, does that ease your concerns at all, or still don't like it?
Well, we kind of, we should also get Sharon's input, she wanted to be heard on this.
Oh, yeah, we're not, we're not deciding this tonight.
Right.
The next thing is we need to go through the RFP.
RFP.
And clean that up.
Right.
So this is what we got last week, and this doesn't, doesn't appear to have the changes in it.
Oh, I thought you put...
Well, it doesn't, well, the dates are wrong, first of all.
Right, and you're not supposed to be the contact person, that's supposed to be the chairman of the Select Board or Bill Sweet.
The one that I sent Bill had the changes on it.
Well, you made one to having questions directed at Bill, but you didn't change who the bids are gonna be subject, submitted to. You understand my issue on that, right?
Right, that's why I changed it.
No, it just says, it still says on what we were given in tonight's packet, it still says the bid should be sent to you.
Plus it has, the site visit's June 18th, which isn't happening.
Right. That was, that was an oversight on my part, that was not intentional.
So you need to fix that.
Yes.
How about the dates, Kirsten?
I thought we changed all of that.
Unless you just made a copy of the wrong one.
It says 6/7 on the top.
Yeah, that might be the wrong.
Yeah, no, I was, I thought that that had all been fixed, I apologize.
It's the wrong copy.
It might have been the wrong copy that got sent to you guys.
You'll have that. Oh, no, because Bill was changed on additional details, number one, so it's, it looks like there was an attempt to correct some of it.
Okay, then I have no idea what happened, and I apologize.
That's all right, just as long as we get it right, and to Josh's point, we gotta have the date changed.
Yes, I agree with you on that.
Do we have a site visit date? Did you figure out what you want to have for a site visit date?
There's one in here, but...
Well, we put that on there, but then, I mean, we weren't sure.
But is June 18th real?
No.
Oh, can't be anymore.
No.
That's a week away.
No, I thought I pushed it back to the 28th.
It's gotta be sometime mid-July at this point.
Yeah, this, something got mixed up, because we moved it back to like the 27th in the, in the copy that we meant to send, so this was definitely, something didn't save or didn't get, there was an oversight.
Okay, thanks.
So, but yeah, I wanted to make sure that you guys could see that, so you could kind of think it over.
It really helps.
Yeah.
It really helps.
I thought it would, I scoured for quite a bit, it was similar to what I was looking for. That was the best one that I had.
Thank you. Do we need to have a building committee to just go over the details and make sure we got everything on the same page?
That'd be a good idea.
Try to squeak that in sometime when we're all available.
Bill and I will work on fixing that, those issues that we thought we fixed.
Just to make sure when we present it to the board the next time, it's right.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's not gonna be me, though.
It was the noise.
It's gonna be some, you're gonna have to come up with another colleague, I'm, we're gonna be tied up for a while.
On.
So, myself personally, so... All right, we'll get back to you about a committee meeting at some point, all right?
That's fine. I have a feeling that we're probably not gonna be looking at doing any renovations at least until fall, just because of the way the builders...
Yeah, there's no sense in rushing this.
So...
Actually, that'd be better, because more people are available to bid on it.
Right.
And like I said, this is a good winner...
And, you know, then we, there's, there's a chunk of time there where we don't really have a lot going on in the office, because we don't have budgets starting yet, and taxes are already collected.
This is a good cold-weather project.
And we don't have an election this year either, which is really good.
That's the one thing, this is a good cold-weather project when construction companies are not working outdoors.
Right.
This would be great.
Right, yeah, so I think that's probably how it's gonna work. That was everything that I had. I just was gonna mention, I'm gonna be off on Thursday and Friday, I'm gonna go out and see my baby nephew, so I'm excited about that, but Susan will be here.
Good.
So we'll just be closed for lunch, and because the next Select Board meeting is the last one of the, of the fiscal year, anyone who has payroll, that needs to be brought in by the 21st on Friday, so that we can make sure that we get that processed in time, because I have a feeling we're gonna get a big stack. So that would be anybody on the Planning Commission, Bill, if you can send out an email would be great. I'm gonna send out an email to all the department heads, just reminding them that if there's any additional payroll, like the constable payroll, that would be great.
Isn't that zeroed out?
Uh, I don't, no, I'd have to double-check it.
I'll call you and find out.
Okay. But like select board hours, things like that, if we can have those in prior to.
So if we don't get them in and we carry them for a couple of months to help with our next tax payment, that doesn't mean they're lost?
No. We do have to go back through, last time we went back through and we added up individually the ones that were prior to the change in the fiscal year, so that we didn't have the difference in the pay scale.
Oh, gotcha.
So it just makes it a little messy on our end, but.
Makes it a lot easier for you if we get it all done before July 1st.
Exactly.
Because of the new rates.
Uh, well, June 21st is when I need it in, because the next select board meeting is gonna be the 25th, so that's the Friday prior.
We'd still be split over the fiscal year anyway.
Slightly, but not by much.
That's when you.
Do you want us to project what we know we're gonna be doing till the end of the month?
If you think, if you think you have it, that would be great.
Well, I know I'm gonna close the gate every night, so I can just project that out to, yeah, okay.
That'd be fine.
Unless you forget it and wake up at night.
I still close it.
I just wanted to.
It's just more of a panic close.
On behalf of the celebration committee, I wanted to thank Kirsten. She negotiated her rate with Kamuta's. They got us an exceptional deal, I think, on the food.
Brian's pretty awesome, so.
Did a nice job.
So thanks for that, and keep up the good work, so.
Yeah.
Anything for Kirsten?
All set.
Great job.
Thanks.
Mike Rowe, town rec director. Good evening. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Uh, we, everything's either come, kinda closing down as far as baseball's coming to a wrap by the end of the next couple of weeks. Pool is just starting up. We had our sign-up day the other day, sign-up days, and not bad for the first one. I think we had 50 passes that we sold, which was good. We took care of the fire department. They're all set with their passes.
I think we need to get them though for the rest of the town employees, Bill, right?
Kirsten, now that's what we have to figure out what you want to do. So she gave me the list of town employees, so if you want me to just dump off all of the passes to her, and then she mails them to everyone, or you want to keep a list at the pool and they can come get it, and I'll give it to them.
Can we, can we just give them to Bill and then ask, send an email to town employees saying if you want your pool pass, pick it up from Billy?
There you go.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you guys think might.
Yeah, that works.
Fire department had them.
Fire department.
Fire department, yeah, they sent me a list and we took care of that.
I gotta say, that's right too.
So however you want, that's fine. I'll do whatever you guys want. Park start looked good. Thanks to Byron and the paving guys. Dewey came out really nice. We're in the process of getting the fence up, and then they will go in and paint it.
Oh, for the tennis courts?
Yeah.
Yeah, that looked good.
Yep, so that will all happen at some point over the summer. Other than that, we're just getting ready to open the pool and all that, that goes with that, and everything's running smoothly with that. That's a good sign.
Really appreciate your folks keeping, making sure they tag that gate going out. It's a really good first line of defense, and it's been done every night, so thank you.
It will be. I was doing stuff back and forth, and I forgot a couple times. That, that was all on me, because they weren't really there.
It's still awesome to see it closed.
But it will be every night. That's their job at the end, is to lock that up.
So I did have a question about parking on the street, because we were doing all of this stuff, so people would be parking inside, and were we gonna sign out on the streets saying no parking?
Yeah, once we got that area set aside.
Yeah, yeah.
But we wanted to make sure that we had plenty of space before we did that.
Plenty there now.
Yes.
Okay.
We were just talking about.
Of putting the signs up?
Well, signs and lines, and we're gonna let, see how people finagle their way into the new parking part, because it's not like you could just go stripe, stripe. There's different ways you could stripe it. So we don't know if we're gonna stripe, but we're gonna see how they, how people do.
It's gonna be like the pit, right?
Yeah, who knows how they're gonna get in there? It's there, once they realize they can park there, then I don't, we won't have a problem, because that gave us an extra 15 parking spots anyway.
Yeah.
So we shouldn't have parking as an issue.
Okay, good.
That should be good to go. Other than that, I can't think. We have a committee meeting next, before our next meeting. Just remember that, to talk about certain things, and other than that, I don't have anything for you unless you have stuff for me. Doesn't appear. Awesome.
Good enough.
Uh, we're good for the celebration and all that?
I hope so. Seems like we have a handle on it.
Well, no, but the big thing is, who are the judges for the chili cook-off?
So, good question. By the end of the week, Bill and I right now have a rough draft of the rules and participation and all that.
Okay.
By Friday, we'll have everything ironed out, and that's what we've already advertised on the website and Facebook is chili cook-offs happening this Friday. You'll have.
Okay.
A list of entry forms and rules and everything, because we've, we've, is it comedy hour back there? What's going on?
Yeah, apparently.
More regulations, Mr. Chairman, yeah.
Yeah, more regulations.
These are gotta be tight rules.
Yeah.
So anyways, by Friday you'll know, all right? Stay tuned.
Okay, just a mention from a veteran of chili cook-offs, that the ones that I've been in start much earlier than what we're proposing to start, which means people are gonna wanna pre-prep stuff. Just saying, if the rules don't have that.
Yours was you can make it off-site and bring it, correct? Is that kinda what?
Right, it was, make, make it off-site and bring it. This is just the first one. This is where we're easing in.
Now, are you exempt because you're on the board?
People there in case it's really, you know.
I'm just asking, if there was a conflict of interest, the Donardo Farmhouse.
I don't have to review our new conflict of interest policy.
Perhaps you didn't see her at the grill last year? She's on waivers for chili this year.
I saw that. I was there.
Chief Clark, is the grill secured?
Uh, not yet.
Oh, boy.
Not yet.
It was my job.
No, it was Deputy, Deputy Chief Carlson was working on that.
Oh, then I told him.
So, all right.
Secure the grill, that would be huge.
Pretty big one that has.
We'll need several.
That one we use.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. The one we use, the cookout's a pretty good size.
Byron Hathaway, town road commissioner. You know the size of the only killing in the house, right?
Come on, we had the fire station.
Probably size of his desk.
One we got at home is almost that big.
Good evening.
Hi, Byron, how are you?
Hi, Byron. Pretty much have one thing on my agenda for tonight, and that is a paper that I handed out to you.
Yes.
Explaining the highway fund, not just the budget, but the overall of the fund, and how the rest of the paving would play out, and it shows that we're gonna probably, if we finish our paving, which would be the school project, we would be in probably a deficit in, for FY 1920.
So there's two line items, one for 45 and one for 25. When it says needed for school construction, is that to prep the lot to be paved? So that's all one thing. So when we take the school out of it, we're taking out enough to give you a little cushion to maybe go into next year?
For a bad winter?
Yeah. All right. So I move, we remove the school project from the highway fund projection for this year?
Motion by John Paul.
I'm gonna second it, yeah. And then we need to, have we approached the school?
Mary, was that a second?
I did second it, yes.
Okay, comments at this time?
Have we approached the school with this, so they know?
No.
Maybe if the vote is successful, you can let them know that, and if they wanted to, like they're gonna get some timber money or whatever, but if they had any resources to contribute that would help us get this back on, but I still don't know how that helps you for next year with the carryover. I don't think it does.
No.
So is this something we should budget for, for the first time we can?
That was, that is one approach. As far as having any carryovers, see that, that 20, the 45,000 that's available for equipment and materials, we would be using 25 of that probably for the school.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's 20 there left over.
Oh, that you gotta use anyway?
That would, I would not spend.
Okay.
So that would sit there, and that would, you know, be available next spring after we got through the winter. If it was available, fine, use it. If it's not available, then it becomes part of your buffer to keep you out of the deficit.
Makes sense.
Okay. The school wanted to contribute, I guess I wouldn't have a problem.
It's really, I'm gonna, I'm gonna probably differ from you, John Paul, on this, but it's my strong opinion that we've already told the school board and the administration and the townspeople frankly, that we are paving that this summer. The parking lot's in bad shape, and I think we need to dig into the budget and figure out where the money can come from for us to get this project complete. I mean, I think it's, I think it sends it, even though the money shows we're short, we know we have ways we can find more somehow. I have confidence we all can, but this, I think it's, you know, we never should have suggested we were gonna do it this year if we didn't have the money for it. It sounds a bad precedent for the other, the other governing body of the town. I mean, it's just, to me, it's, it's a, it's a bad, I don't, I don't wanna be involved in that.
Part of the problem, Josh, was the construction money that I, that I had to spend on McKinley Avenue and North Grove Street. And those cost a little more money than I had anticipated, and that's where that money disappeared to.
Yep.
So I'm not, I'm not gonna apologize. I did do less, I did do less construction on McKinley Avenue Hill than I had wanted to do, but I cut that back for that reason.
Joe, thoughts?
Um, just, and I don't know what the guidelines for capital improvement fund, do they, does that specifically for buildings, or would that be allowed? Would this be considered a capital improvement to fix that parking lot at the school?
It's not a, it's not a Rutland Town Municipal Improvement.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Okay.
But the school does have the money from the timber sales.
Yeah, but I don't think they have 50 grand.
They have 27, 24, 25,000.
They probably have.
But if they paid half of it, that would offset our shortfall.
Yeah. If they came up with 25,000, which is about their share.
Right.
That keeps you out of your deficit.
Right.
So can we maybe table the motion and have Byron go visit with the school?
I can. My concern is making sure that the paving company is still gonna be on.
Yes.
On target. I mean, I kinda have to let people know. I've already talked to the paving companies that I may have to do this. I need to bring, I didn't get these numbers, I wish I had them in your packet, but I didn't get these numbers till after 2 o'clock this afternoon. That's how fresh this is. And I was almost ready to bring this to you at your last board meeting, but I wanted harder, firmer numbers, and that's why I waited until now. I'm very confident in these numbers.
I really, you know, I'll echo my comments again, I really think in the next fiscal year, we gotta find the money somewhere. I just think this is bad partnership with the school that now we're sort of backpedaling a little bit, and I am not blaming anybody, I'm just saying it's life.
It was a bad winter, Josh.
Life.
Do we have a liaison?
We used to have a select board member that was.
I used to be, but then Sharon came on and she was, you know, former school board member, so I don't know if she's still.
They pretty much take the summer off. The school board doesn't, I don't know if they even have a meeting left this. Mike?
You just said you're meeting last night.
That's it for the summer, right?
That I can't tell you, but I, you would know.
I think in August they have like a goal-setting meeting, but I think they take July off.
And this decision needs to be made in the next few days.
Yeah. Does the contractor sound?
I can go, I can call Matt and talk to Matt. Right, you still the board chairman?
Yeah. I would be, that's what I do. I mean, if they can come up with that portion, and then that would offset that and covers your deficit, then we'd be good. We can keep going.
So table it? Yes, except we're not gonna be able to bring it up until our next meeting then.
And are we too late then?
I will make some phone calls tomorrow and let everybody know that all plans are still kinda there.
Okay.
But not definite, and.
Or we could take a contingent vote to remove it pending their agreement to supplement.
By the end of the month.
Do we wanna say how much we're figuring they should supplement?
25, right?
25.
25.
Want to do that?
You have amended the motion?
Yes.
And I'll amend the second, so.
Motion by John's been amended, seconded by, the amended motion's been seconded by Mary. Any further discussion?
Do you wanna clarify that motion for the, for the guy right?
We're removing the school project pending the ability to add it back in if they wanna step up to the plate and pay the 25 grand.
Right.
Okay. Do you get that, you good, Bill?
And then we're still covering.
I wanted you to be clear.
But we're still covering 20 grand of the construction.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And, and that'll still make sure that we're good.
Yep.
Yeah.
All's in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, no? I'm voting no. Motion passes.
That's what that was?
Motion passes three to one.
Okay.
But you still want me, do you want me to approach the?
Yeah.
Motion pass.
Tell them that we've removed it pending their willingness to step up. Thanks, Byron.
Other than that, we started on Post Road, rowing, mowing road sides, and tractor went to Clarendon, kinda wanted to dress up Middle Road prior to their Mill River graduation. Tractor will be back Monday, and we're gonna put a guy in there every day, so we'll be, we'll have all the main roads done anyways next week.
Pothole that's developed by the bridge there by Danny's. Yeah, I think you fixed it.
Oh, that popped back out again?
Yeah, there's, there's a pretty good crater there.
On Creek Road, I noticed today.
Yeah. I, yeah.
There is?
South of your house.
Let's rethink this, because if it slows down the traffic.
You're in favor of grinding it and leaving it that way. Dirt would be good.
Wait, 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 wait. Class four road guidelines? We talked about this at our.
Committee meeting.
At our highway committee meeting. You will recall that when we were talking about moving Dire Road and Sugarwood Hill Road from class three to class four, the question came up, well, what is our policy for what we do during, on class four roads for winter maintenance? And our town attorney passed along the town of Kirby's class four guidelines. We went over it at highway committee, and we came up with our own version of it. We don't, I mean, there's nothing urgent, because winter hopefully won't, won't happen right away.
It looks good to me, I read it.
Really simple little document.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Motion by John Paul, seconded by Joe to approve the town road and class four road guidelines for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, Bill, it goes in our policy book. Thank you. Um, just a couple of other things. Oh, from the highway committee meeting?
Yeah, it's coming around.
Yeah, it does, okay. Uh, we did the class road. Um, winter maintenance policy you had provided to us and weren't we gonna, and the mailbox damage policy? Was there some question about whether we had ever adopted it and whether the full board needed to?
No, it has never been adopted.
Okay.
It's a document that I wrote several years ago. It just never floated to the top as far as bringing it to the board.
Okay.
Uh, Andres thought that it needed to be part of the storm water management plan.
Right.
Which I don't quite understand, uh, why, but anyways.
I thought we moved to approve that last time though. Didn't we prove that?
Did we do that last time? No, cause the highway committee didn't look at it.
It would be in the minutes, but.
Yeah. I don't.
Boy, I thought we did, cause you had put, it was in our packet two weeks ago.
Was there something about Andres, cause it tied in, we needed to know whether Andres felt that this policy met his needs?
Okay.
That was the question.
Alright.
And he has since said, yeah, it's okay.
Yes, um, but he would like to also see something in there as far as, um, how we handle erosion and bridge and those kinds of things. And I said, well, that's all covered by our road and bridge standards and, uh, I need to get him a copy of that.
Okay, so we're not ready yet.
We sign every winter before we send in our certificate of Iowan. But I gotta get that to him.
Okay. So I think those are the only, um, other than just a feeling from the select board, do we move forward with? Or do we do this last meeting too? Dire Road and Sugarwood Hill Road moving up, throwing up, throwing them up as town roads? Do we vote on that?
I don't think you want to throw up Dire Road, but you certainly could throw up the other one.
Yeah, the other one.
I think that was Kevin's, uh.
That was his recommendation actually.
Recommendation was to throw up Sugarwood Hill.
I don't remember voting on that.
Alright.
It was in an email.
You remember voting on that though? I don't.
Voting on, you voted to reclassify it to class four.
Yeah, we went to class four.
Right, but I think that throwing up that section of.
But if you're gonna throw it up, you have to start another process.
Right.
Yes.
Which includes a public hearing.
So we need a motion.
Well, let me just make sure we haven't already.
Bill, I gave Bill at the last meeting what all those procedures were, so.
Okay.
You know, we could start that over the course of the summer.
Yeah, there's no urgency again on that.
Well, we ought to get out of, we ought to try to do it before another plowing season starts.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and then let them deal with it after.
Kevin, you know, just said that you just issue a quick claim deed and the town's off the hook.
Yeah.
Let the landowners decide on how they're gonna do it.
They want to split it up.
No, we did not vote on it, so we need to keep that, you know, in mind. So maybe a month from now on the agenda.
For the winter maintenance policy.
We got the winter maintenance policy. We just adopted, no, throwing up. God, I love that expression. I do.
Throwing up.
It reminds me of my Latin class.
Just continuing a town road.
There, that's probably better. But there was a, in Latin class, we were translating Caesar and there was this wonderful phrase where Caesar went out after dinner and threw up in a bank net. Anyway, so.
We've really gone off the rails.
High school humor.
I guess so.
So speaking of the rails and things, the railroad is putting another siding down on the Bennington line.
They're headed, they started from Ranberry Road and went north and now I think they're headed south.
Okay. Um, I know that there's probably nothing there that we gotta be concerned about, but given what went on.
Sewer line's on the other side.
Well, they'll find a way to cover it.
Our sewer line is on the other side. I've been down the block.
Okay, I'm just saying, given what went on before.
Our sewer line is on the west side of the tracks to a manhole and then it's a, makes a ninety-degree turn and goes up Ranberry Road under the tracks.
Okay, because they have put a siding on the other side already down there. Isn't there two?
No.
No? Cause, cause when you look down the tracks from Park Street, it looked like to me there's a siding down there. There's tracks on both sides of the tracks, but I'll have to look again.
That would be in the city then anyway.
Right, but I didn't know how far extended.
Uh, cause I, because there is a manhole down there that they absolutely cannot build over the top of, because they're gonna literally cave it in.
Right.
It's just a, an aluminum cover like what you have on your basement door.
Maybe put a big sign next to it.
That one, that's the manhole that had the, that manhole that had the weir in it that we took out.
Byron, at one time, um, we had gotten a bunch of signs and we're gonna mark those, yeah.
As soon as we get caught up on our shoulder work.
Or whatever.
I'm gonna grab Jason and we're gonna flip the manhole covers and we're gonna get our, get the markers all put in. Yeah.
Yeah, cause I know that, we started that process like two years ago. We got the signs ordered and got that stuff, okay. Cause anything that we can do to make it much more difficult than bury one would be really good.
There are markers on the ones down there in Ranberry Road, cause they were helping the fragmities until we put markers out there.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to make, I know that you, um, were approached about them had access to that site and off of Ranberry and I just. So I figured you were on top of it, but like every time I go down Park Street, I just.
Uh, I don't know if this wants to go to the water sewer committee or, or not, um, but it, my email's there and I've got one from Robert Clark and they have a preliminary drawing.
Oh, good.
And for the Ranberry Road water extension, they, and they would like to sit down with somebody and go over it and address any town standards that we have for materials and that sort of thing.
Water sewer committee meeting? Can we get one set up please? Thank you.
What, you know, just.
I think you're on it.
I know I'm on it. I just want to be there.
Yeah. What we had Bill do before was a doodle poll, which, you know, cause we have a number of, we have quite a few people on that committee.
That committee has five or six people on it.
Yeah, it's more than that, but.
I don't know how many, I don't know, five of them has to show up just to deal with manholes and.
Well, I think it's important Mary and Joey are there.
Yeah, and Byron.
Byron, of course, but. Mary and Joey taking out their vested interests.
So he should be there.
Yeah. Hay, hay, hay season mornings are good if it ever gets to be hay season.
Oh, that's true. Okay. Well, the hay's high enough.
Yeah, so is the water. Water's right up there. But anyway, but you know, we just get together and look at that would be really good.
Okay, yeah.
Robert said he was in and out of his office, but he said he would just make time to, to meet with us.
Number ten in our packets was the, uh, engineering grant agreement for Townline Road. You ready for that Byron?
Yes. That's the grant agreement, that's the standard grant agreement that they sends out every year. Um, I will have to send a certificate of insurance with that.
Looks like there's a spot for the.
At that point, we're good to go or.
Select board, five places on the back. Is that what you got?
And then they will send, they will sign it and send it back to us and at that point then we can go.
Yeah, that's ten.
Uh, move to approve.
Second.
Motion by, uh, yeah, so number ten, what's stapled there is the class four road reclassification. That shouldn't be there.
I think we need to add and authorize our select board to sign on behalf of this.
So added.
Okay.
So motion's been made to authorize the chair, seconded by Mary. That's on page, uh, two of twenty.
Yep.
You're good with this?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, there's a lot of stuff.
And just a note, I'm trying to use up, uh, what remaining few vacation days I have, so I will be off this week and we'll be off a few days next week.
Okay.
May you have dry weather.
And I will be caught up. Wagon will be ready.
No more phone calls from my wife, I promise.
You gonna bring the fifty-three tractor again?
Yep.
Alright.
If I get the clutch for it.
I don't want no whiffs. I want to see that fifty-three.
Okay, thanks Byron. Appreciate it. So one in your packet, eight through C is handled. Uh, five, seven, eight, nine, ten. We're gonna go to, uh, fire chief Chris Clark and deputy chief Delvin Arie. Larry, you coming up?
Uh, he's fine.
Larry, you're, Larry, you're, you're about to get a, you're about to get a pay raise tonight, so you want to pay attention.
Yeah.
Chief, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Happy fortieth.
Hey, thanks.
We shared that, uh, that if you didn't see this cake that Mrs. Clark got made for the chief, it's a thing of art. I mean, it's beautiful. This, and I'll circulate the photo for those who don't have Facebook, but.
Is he trying to embarrass you?
I'm not. It's on Facebook. I, I had, I had to share it on the town's Facebook page.
So he's sharing the photo, but not the actual cake?
Yeah, that's.
That is not last on us.
So, nice job to carry.
Yeah.
What do you got for us?
Um, I have the price for the truck lettering of the new pickup. I need, would like to get approved tonight, so I could get that all ordered up. It's, uh, two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Lettering on the pickup.
Motion by Joe Nerto is there second?
Second.
Seconded by John Paul for discussion.
Does that come from the equipment fund too?
Yes.
Yes, from the truck.
And, and it'll match good.
It will. She came and took pictures and.
And were you able to get the seal?
Yep.
They were able to, good, good. Then you had some questions about that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Um, thanks Sharon, she's not here, but, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Flower planters are done.
They look great.
I mean, the next day after she called.
Yeah.
I gotta give credit where credit's due. Bill and I called and called. Yeah, it's happening, it's happening. I asked Sharon to get on it and next day the flower pots are done.
I don't know what she said, but.
Something about her Italian mother.
I think you could, I don't think you should repeat it in public.
Yeah.
But anyways, they're done. They look good, so.
They're done. Um, The Home Depot's gonna donate some flowers to us, so.
Good.
Marty and Tom and Tique and start planting them.
Great.
Um, I have three, uh, applications I was hoping you guys could approve tonight. We met with these three last night. We have a fourth to meet with tomorrow. He couldn't make it last night.
The constable did the background checks?
Yep.
Recommendation is to approve.
I do have one more JP. I.
Right here?
Perfect.
And it's been approved.
Beautiful. Thank you, sir.
He's right on it.
The constabulary's right on it tonight.
Alright. Um, Friday, we're gonna take.
Hold on one second. We're gonna approve these first for you.
Oh, okay.
Are these all, looks like, are they all in the city?
Yes, they are.
How many positions do we have for the city?
Um, well, we have a total of ten. We've had a few members.
Okay, cause we can't go over ten.
Correct.
Okay. And this, these guys won't put us over. Okay. Alright.
Um. Handwriting is.
Yeah.
So is there a motion to be made to approve?
You want to mention the names or?
Tyler, the.
Baffalon.
Baffalon, Dan or Don?
Uh, Dan Johnson.
Johnson.
And the third one?
Ally.
We just call her Ally.
Ally on a, a Stavlich.
She, she's from, uh, she's European.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, that's great.
Country very long.
Uh, so is there a motion to approve these three?
Move to approve.
Motion by John, or, uh, Joe, seconded by Mary, to approve these three candidates for probationary fire positions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion passes. We'll all sign the bottoms here.
Yep. Sign in.
I left you a little room.
Yeah, wow. They can read my name.
What else you got for us, chief?
Um, Friday, a former teacher of mine at the town school has asked me if we could bring a truck up to spray the kids from kindergarten and pre-kindergarten. They're too young to go to the pool for the party, so I said sure.
That's great.
So I'll be up there Friday.
You get some pictures for us?
I will. Uh, I'll probably be there at twelve-thirty to set up so the kids come, come out at one. So.
What, you take, are you taking a half day or?
I'm on the side of the gym, I'll work today or something. We got a hook to that fire hydrant.
You're not gonna wash any of them away or anything, are you?
Good if you had that gun, you could. That one year we went up there and sprayed water. We were spraying it over the buildings. The kids were wondering what was going on. Yeah, we were doing, we were coming down by earroom. Yeah, yeah.
The, um, the, on a more serious note, the, uh, fire committee meeting had met recently and, um, reevaluated the pay scale for, um, the two deputy, deputy chief positions and to separate them out and really, um, define the role, um, for future growth and development of line officers who aspire and to reward the, um, work that's put in behind the scenes the committee recommends to the board. We've also checked to make sure that we have enough money budgeted in the next fiscal year. Uh, we would recommend that the full board support our recommendation of moving two deputy chiefs to eighteen dollars an hour as their part-time hourly wage as they see fit to put in hours for the position.
So it's not as, um, it's not as high as some, it's not as low as some, but I think that it's important as the department grows that we do set up a little differential between the officers, especially given that, uh, just like the police department, the obligation to do paperwork and comply with regulations is, uh, an ever-increasing task for these gentlemen and they do a very good job at it. And I think their rate should reflect that.
One thing we should do is clarify whether we're going, um, in the bylaws, I think they're referred to as the assistant chiefs. And you refer to them as deputy chiefs and there is a difference in the hierarchy of the fire service as to that designation. So are we gonna continue to call them assistant chiefs or deputy chiefs?
Well, I think in the bylaws right now, it's assistant chiefs.
Assistant chiefs, and I think we should leave it that way, cause there, there is a different.
There is difference.
There is a difference between a deputy chief and assistant chief.
I spent nine years there and I didn't realize that there was a difference between the two, so someone's gonna have to tell me online someday what the heck the difference is.
The bugle.
I believe it.
Bugle?
Yeah, the assistant chief said.
Yeah, assistant chiefs have, uh, four. And a deputy chief's dozen, that's three. Yeah, it's a rank.
So I've been demoting them every time.
Every time you talk to him, you demote him.
I apologize Larry, I never meant that.
He's gone from a peon to an assistant chief in like a month. He's good. Doesn't matter.
Alright, our assistant chiefs pay would be, the recommendation go to eighteen dollars an hour come July first of nineteen. Is that a motion by someone?
So moved.
Mary, Joe, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Long way since seventeen years.
I guess so. Chris, what else you got for us?
I only have one more thing. Um, there's a building on the corner of Leeson Road and Woodstock Avenue. It used to be a gas station.
Yeah.
You mean that place has been spiffed up and?
That's the place.
Hated and, the one without a roof?
Well, that's, that's my concern. There's, it's starting to fold in, so I've told everybody on the department, we're not going in that thing.
No, 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 no. It, it's actually folded in, but I cannot find a single hook to hang my hat on that we could condemn the building, cause it doesn't have a roof on it, as long as the walls are structurally sound. And they are.
I have one of my contacts who keeps an eye on the place saying that the beams were actually removed and he was hoping it was going to be taken down, but I guess it was just.
Well, he had to remove the collapsed thread. He had to do that per my health order.
Gotcha.
Everything that we've done has been done.
Yeah.
And, and everything's been done to your liking so far. That's as much as we can do.
Okay, that's all I can do. I can't do anymore.
Okay. I just wanted to make you aware that, uh, if it's ever on fire, we're not going in.
No, no. Besides, Chris, there, it's full of, uh, boards and stuff like that. There's nothing in there to save.
Just protect us, yeah. Um, on a note, um, I'm meeting with Mark Kussell tomorrow at one o'clock at McKinley Station. Um.
Oh, nice.
Well, it's, that kinda got waylaid and Mark's had, uh, he wasn't feeling well for it, so there's been some stuff going on, but hopefully we'll get a idea of what's there and what's going on and then we can go present something to Mrs. Barrett.
So I think that, uh, moves us in nicely to, while you're still sitting there, chief, um, letter H for to discuss, board to discuss establishing a committee for the replacement of the McKinley Avenue Fire Station. We've known for a while that this was coming. We've known that it was a need. Both those stations, I don't know history as well as you do as a former chief, but both stations were built within a year of each other in the late sixties.
Sixty-seven and sixty-eight. I believe they were done, yeah.
The more urgent need was the replacement of Center Rutland several years back.
Yeah.
And it's time that we as a, a board and, uh, fire department and police department, quite frankly, start to talk about future plans for McKinley Avenue. So, uh, I put it on here tonight for us to at least certainly not solve any of the problems, uh, or lay groundwork to the new fire station, but to at least have the discussion to form a committee that can start to, you know, pilot a, sort of a wishlist of what we think we need in another building. So, um, my recommendation was the, the full select board, the fire chief, the police chief and anyone else that we saw fit as a, and Bill Sweet, of course, would be involved.
Um, what we did for the last building was, um, there was the chief and his officers and then two members from the board and we had a few other people sit in, so however you want it, but yeah, cause, cause I would like to, um, be part of that only to kinda try to continue what we had planned when we started with.
I nominate you'd be chairman of the committee.
What a good idea.
They can't see that. That's up to Chris. I mean, I would, I, uh, when I was, when we did Center as fire chief, I was in charge, chairman. And I, and I, not trying to shirk that, but I, I do think that's a privilege that should go to Chris.
Is that something you want?
Sure.
Kinda just chair it and listen to us and.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, Joe. Yeah, it's a good point.
Alright, so Chris is gonna chair. The, the recreation department wanted to put some.
I'd like to be on the committee.
Okay. Okay. Uh, we also, you know, uh, I think it's great.
I'm a town resident. I, I'm a senior. I'd like to be on.
So it's gonna, and I would suggest that although there were two board members before, I think there's at least three, if not more, board members here. Mary, I'm sure. It's probably all five of us want to be involved in this, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's fine. However you want to do it, I just, you know, we, we have, I'd like, like I said, just to kinda try to keep some continuity as to what we were planning to build the first one and, you know, Chris was part of that and so this, this should work out well.
Um, and obviously, uh, Ed Dumas would be a part of this as we, some of us, some of us feel that it's, you know, they're outgrowing their little home and it'd be great to be up there.
Well, I, I spent about ten minutes tonight talking with the chief and we kinda concur that now would be a good time and a good place to find a permanent home for a police department.
I agree.
And, and I think this, this might be the, a good, a good place to do all of this in one place.
So, um, anyways.
It's beginning of the discussion.
Beginning of the discussion. We'll sometime in July schedule our first, uh, meeting. You're gonna chair it, so.
Alright.
Be ready.
Yeah.
Alright.
Good.
Good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Find out about that grill if you would, sir. It's a pretty intricate part of our celebration. Uh, Ed Dumas is absent. Uh, he is away for some, uh, trainings this week. Um, he did give us, uh, the two-week call volume. This is, seems to be an uptick from what we've seen in the last few select board meetings.
Summer.
Yeah, so.
Everybody's out.
I do know that they, they did put a press release out late last week about up in my neighborhood of Killington Avenue, Townline Road, there was cars that were, um, basically did not, they were all unlocked from my understanding and change and dollar bills were taken.
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
So make sure you lock your cars and, uh, you know, try to keep the valuables out of it, so. Anyways, there's the list.
Um, well, police committee did meet. There's no action items from that. Um, we are going to have a surplus, a considerable surplus unspent in the police budget. We did talk about a speed cart and you'll hear more about that potentially in the next budgeting cycle. Um, speed enforcement we talked about and we had some folks here tonight, um, also on that. And then we touched on the five-year plan in the police department and, you know, do, do we find a home up at McKinley? Do we find a home expanded here downstairs and so on? So we're all talking about these things.
Yeah. I, I'd be in favor, Mary, of someone making a motion tonight to authorize us to buy the speaker out of the July one nineteen depreciation account for police, just so we can get a two-week jump on research and getting these things ordered.
So move. Second.
Uh, motion by John, seconded by Joey for discussion.
Um, we're still, the chief needs to come in with, you know, the details about what it's gonna, but we can let him know that we're, we're moving forward on it.
Okay. I think we heard loud and clear tonight from a passionate resident that we need this, so.
You didn't even comment about your road. I only spent twenty minutes at your house and wanted to be out back and nowhere near the front. The way they drive up and down Killington Avenue was almost as bad as Grove Street.
If it was up to my wife, we'd, we'd have a toll road with speed bumps and, uh, believe me, I hear, it's not easy having a wife and your select board member.
Yeah.
I hear about it constantly.
You know, the newer spreader that dribbles is, anyway, just saying, it works down on post trip.
She wants to throw tennis balls at cars. I mean, I talk her out of the, off the ledge all the time, so. Uh, anyways, motion has been, uh, made. So we did, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. John Paul, health, town health officer, any update?
No.
Alright, sir. Committee meeting updates. I think we've beat the townwide celebration to death.
On the energy committee, we received the proposals from Green Lantern and being sent on to council.
Great.
Good.
Uh, anything from highway or did we discuss all that?
I think we covered highway. I do have, um, scholarship committee.
Please.
We did send one. I wasn't able to go over to West Rutland, cause I was pretty sick. That was on Friday night, so we sent an envelope over there for our student in West Rutland and Josh and I are presenting scholarships at Rutland High's graduation. Um, five-thirty, but they're gonna put us on first, early.
I saw that email.
Isn't that exciting?
Are they really?
Yeah, that's what she says.
And then we can leave?
Then we can leave. Right. So you and I are there at five-thirty. Scholarships begin at six.
Great.
Um, let's see, I don't know, um, Byron, Bill, Kirsten and I attended a meeting held by Otter Creek Engineering, hosted by them. Um, and they had down from the Department of, of Environmental Conservation, two folks who held, um, of, of Environmental Conservation two folks who held, um, who were responsible for funding of safe drinking water and, um, storm water MS4 mitigation projects, and we heard two hours' worth of how we, there are low-interest, uh, funds and, um, loan forgiveness available for planning and for actual construction, so we have, you know, we can take that to the Water and Sewer Committee, and we have some ideas, so that was a great session. Um, I spoke of Rutland High School, and tomorrow night, um, no, yeah, tomorrow night we're going to the, um, scholarship, uh, Thursday night I'm going to the Regional Commission, and the discussion will be about, um, energy committees and what they look like in various